Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I am present.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Good afternoon, good evening to everyone, to the City Council, the staff, and especially the members of the Sacramento public. We have a very important agenda tonight. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask our city clerk, Mindy Capi, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members and members of the public, to Madam Clerk, there have been some changes to the agenda and some proposed continuances. And I turn it over to Madam Clerk, before we even get to the consent calendar, to describe what is sought to be continued.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, item number 24, which is a time extension of temporary street closures on 64 Alley Streets in the City Council District 5, we'd like to continue that item to April 13 at 2:00. Is that accurate, Vice Mayor Shenier?
Why don't we give it two weeks, so we can make sure we can get everybody into talk?
So, we'll continue that to April 20 at 5:00 p.m.?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So, item 24 is continued to April 20 at 5:00 p.m. Item number 26, which is establishing a moratorium on cannabis use in District 2 and declaring the ordinance to be of an emergency nature to take effect immediately, that's also continued to April 20 at 5:00 p.m. Is that accurate, Councilmember Laloe?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And item 27 is SAC Kids First Coalition Proposal. That item will also be heard on 4/13 at 2:00 p.m.
You don't need votes on those continuances, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Let us then begin with the consent calendar. And are there questions on the consent calendar or items that members want to either ask questions, make comments, or consider separately?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on item 5. I don't need to pull it.
Yes, please. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to note, this is the Rancho San Miguel Market. The city is collaborating with the ownership of the market, and they are moving into the site that Food Source left on Broadway in Stockton. I think this is an exciting time for that whole neighborhood, for many reasons, most of which we'll talk about later. But the folks at San Miguel have decided they want to land another store in the Sacramento area. It is going to be really a flagship for what they're doing. So, we're very excited about that. The city's putting in a $1.1 million loan. So, that'll be repaid, and the money will come back into a fund for Oak Park when the repayments occur on that. So, we're very excited about that. I want to thank the folks from San Miguel. I want to thank the community for being patient. Took us about a year to find another market. Their hope for an opening is in the fall of this year. So, we're greatly looking forward to that. And I want to thank the owner of the property, Satiri Colacatronas, who worked with us to really find a grocer. That was what the community wanted. It's a food desert without that store and without that grocery store. And Satiri very much also listened to the community about their number-one desire, which was a new grocery store moving in there. So, again, we're excited about it and look forward. I've told them I want to be a taster in their bakery. So, that will be hopefully my future here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just echo those comments. And an exciting thing is it's an employee-owned grocery store as well.
Well, also, thank you, Eric. Employee-owned, and they've committed to 75% local hire as well. So, we're excited about all of those pieces.
It's great achievement. Thank you both of you.
Mayor, I have a comment on 22.
Okay. I think a couple of other members have their hands raised as well. Since I'm in the chamber now, and I can't see the Zoom in front of me, like when I'm at home, I'm going to have Madam Clerk help me with calling the members in order here.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Valenzuela and then Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to abstain from item 2, since I wasn't on the council on 2018. And I'd also like to pull item 7 and item 13 for further discussion.
For to just be heard separately tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, 7 and 13, we will talk about and vote on separately. That's fine. Councilmember Vang is next.
Yeah, I was just going to abstain from item number 2, because I was also not here during that time. That was the only thing I wanted to flag. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, item 22 really comes down to water rights. And this cooperative agreement, the common interest agreement, is a little-known thing, but very important, to secure our water security and water rights for the future. So, I just wanted to call out the good work of Dan Sanger in utilities on this.
Good, thank you. Thank you to Dan Sanger. That's great. Okay. So, let us-
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar minus item 7 and 13.
And recognizing that Councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang are abstaining on item 2.
Correct.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure who that was, but-
Councilmember Geta had already seconded it.
For Geta, press his Jeopardy button first.
And I have four callers on the consent calendar.
We have four callers on the consent calendar, so let's hear from the public.
Thank you. May we have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. My name is Adrian Wren with the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, or OPNA. In line with the letter we submitted on item 5, we support a resolution that enables the establishment of a new grocery store at the former Food Source location in Oak Park. As you all know, Oak Park has been a food desert since March 2020, when Food Source closed due to low profitability just as a global pandemic kicked off. OPNA and the city have both worked to gauge resident needs and desires in a new grocery store, which have centered on affordability, community responsiveness, and healthy food access. The proposed Rancho San Miguel Market meets these goals and fills a critical gap in our hyper-local food system while perpetuating an innovative employee-ownership model. We ask that OPNA have an opportunity to work with the city with 4401 Broadway investors and the new tenant to ensure that the venture is a resounding success from both a business perspective and in serving our community. Among the ideas we'd like to explore are square footage dedicated to fresh produce, square footage dedicated to hot-prepared meals, carrying cold-prepared meals for CalFresh and EBT utilization, donating excess food to local food banks, pantries, and grassroots distributors, ensuring consistent local hiring, carrying local products, and more. So, given the critical importance of a grocery store at the former Food Source site, we urge the approval of this loan. Look forward to a fruitful working relationship as we advance public health and meet basic needs in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, Bishop Chris Baker, District 8. I am speaking on behalf of item 5. I think it's a great idea in support of approving this, because it will bring jobs to that area and create an employee ownership of that particular grocery store. I have worked with these individuals to gain a store in my area and two other areas outside the county. It's a great company, and they plan to expand into Sacramento. So, I think it's a great idea you are doing, and I fully support it. And I ask each and every one of you to fully support it. That will create jobs and benefit that area.
Thanks, Chris. Probably 75 to 80 jobs through the store.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Davi Rodriguez. I represent Fight Back in SAC. And I wanted to talk on item number 13, which is the artwork purchase. I hope you all know what that is. But I want to say that the city cannot sign this contract. It is unlawful. These artists do not have contractor's licenses. I did a public records search and had them supply me several years' worth of contracts from the art department there, the Arts Council, whatever it is. And they are contracting with people to go install artwork, and they don't have contractor's license. It's required. I'm sure Mr. Mayor knows that, because he sat in the State House making these laws for, you know, almost 20 years. And I'm sure he sat on the Business and Professions Council, I mean, Business and Professions Committee. Anything over $500, you need a contractor's license. It is plain disrespectful for them to issue these contracts to people who don't have them. There is no exemption. Believe me, I've looked. And if there is one, maybe they could clue in about several million of us in this state who would certainly like to make use of it. Because as it sits right now, these contractors giving, signing these contracts out in the field somewhere, they would be arrested if they went to one of those stings that the Contractor's License Board holds, which they do. They put people in handcuffs for doing this very thing. Now, I know it might just be overlooked, and I wonder why the city attorney did not catch this after reviewing these. But read the plain language of the Contractor's License law. These people have installation in the contractors, in the contracts that you're issuing, and that's where the dividing line is. They can sell all the artwork that they want to. That's fine. The minute they go installing it, that becomes a requirement. They have a contractor's license, and that is in that contract.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Please stop this contract, or I am going to go to the Contractor's License Board and ask for an investigation of this.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Mayor and City Council members. My name is Anatoli Gaviluc, and I would like to speak on item number 5. I would like to ask City Council members and the City Mayor if this project will require prevailing wage. Is any prequal language in place? Thank you.
Somebody want to answer the caller's question? Just a question that I think-
Does someone want to answer the caller's question?
Vice Mayor or member of the-
Yeah, I believe it will require prevailing wage, because there's city money being involved in it. I don't know that there is prequal language within that. But I would ask the city attorney if she wants her, if Mr. Ruyak is here to weigh in on that as well. This is basically for tenant improvements is worth the loan is for.
Mr. Ruyak? Maybe we can report out a little later.
If you could, Mindy, if you want to get my office and name and number of the individual, then we'll respond.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll get that phone number.
Why don't we do it that way? That-
Yes. We will provide a response for that.
Thank you so much. That is the, those are the callers on the consent calendar. We do have a motion on a second to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of item 7 and 13. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. The consent calendar, with the exception of the two items that I mentioned, passes unanimously. Let's go now to item 7, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank City Treasurer Colville. You might recall, back in January, I raised a question about whether the city was investing in fossil fuel funds. And the answer, unfortunately, is yes, to the tune of about $19 million. So, after talking to Mr. Colville and modeling after the practice that was pioneered, I think, by Councilmember Jennings regarding Wells Fargo Investments, wanted to pull this item to see if the council objected to us giving the treasurer's office direction not to invest in fossil fuel funds on a go-forward basis. Most of the funds, $19 million, will be out in May, and the rest will take a little bit longer. But I see Mr. Colville's come on the screen. If you'd like to expand it all on my brief summation, but was looking to basically ask if the council had objection to providing that direction before we approved this month's investment report. And Mr. Colville, if you'd like to add anything?
Sure, Councilmember. The City Treasurer's Office currently manages about $1.8 billion. And like the council member says, there's about $18 million that's invested in fossil fuels, names like Shell and Chevron. And they will be rolling off the majority of them next month. I've talked with our chief investment officer, Stacy Hussey. And there's alternative ways for us to get energy exposure through more environmentally-friendly companies, as well as using energy ETFs. So, the fact that we, if the council prefers not restricting us from buying individual fossil names, it should not impair our portfolio whatsoever.
Thank you, Treasurer. And in general, you know, investments in fossil fuels funds are proven not only to be bad for our climate, but just not as great financial investments as some other options that are on the table. So, without, I just want to raise, if anybody has objection or comments before we vote on this item.
Whether anyone has a, can you ask the question again? I'm sorry, Councilmember. Your question to the members-
It's okay. We went back and forth on this, too, about whether this required an amendment or a resolution, or if it was just enough to do direction. And so, the conclusion from the city attorney is that we could just provide direction without a resolution unless there was objections from my colleagues. And Susanna Icay just came on screen to clarify. So, go ahead, Susanna.
Go ahead.
That is accurate, Councilmember. The direction to the City Treasurer is what the council just needs to do now.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is, I think, you know, in my mind, a significant move. And while on the surface, I agree with Councilmember Valenzuela, I would like to have a conversation with Mr. Colville about this before I felt confident moving forward just on the fly on a consent item. So, I would like to bring it back, perhaps at our next meeting, before we approve, you know, this report, so that I could have that conversation about the ramifications of changing the investment portfolio.
So, Councilmember Valenzuela, you're the, you pulled it off consent to make a very important point here. What's your desire here with the measure?
I mean, yeah, if there are concerns from my colleagues about the implications of this, then we could agendize it, you know, as soon as feasible-
Sure.
-so that we could take an actual vote on a separate item. That makes sense as well.
Could we put it back on the consent calendar next week after Councilmember Harris has had that opportunity and passed it as part of the consent calendar?
Yeah, I don't have any intention to us doing that.
Okay. Then the motion will be to continue item 7 to next week. It's a matter of putting it on the consent calendar again. Councilmember Harris?
And, Mr. Mayor, can I add something first, before we move on?
Sure.
Just for Councilman Harris's information, we model around the S&amp;P 500, as you know, Jeff. And energy has fallen so poorly lately, well, up until the first two months of this year, it's only about 4% of the benchmark. So, it's not a significant portion. And we can get, like I said before, we can get energy exposure through exchange-traded funds without buying individual names. So, it really, it impacts our ability to own specific names, but not exposure to the benchmark. So, if that helps you, but I'd be glad to discuss it further with you.
Jeff, do you want to wait a week, or do you want to vote tonight?
Yeah, let's wait a week. I'd like to look at it a little more in depth.
I think that's a courtesy, and Councilmember Valenzuela's okay with that. The item will be continued until next week, all right?
Oh, and, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure that I'm super clear, because I think we need to actually provide direction. So, if this is on consent next week, I think it would need to include some sort of direction, or I would need to pull it again so that we could provide that direction to staff and give the council a chance.
Can we write in the direction that Councilmember Valenzuela has requested? Yes, we can do that. We'll work it out with you, okay? How about that? We'll work it out with you offline, either consent or not. But we will make sure that the direction that you are pushing is part of the item, one way or another, okay?
Yeah, and the treasurer could always add a supplemental report.
Yeah.
That's often how we handle direction when you continue an item.
Okay, we'll figure it out. We will figure it out.
I'll talk with Suzanne and figure out how to do it.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We're all on the same page. Very good. Item 13.
This one is me again. So, I wanted to just pull this item, because when I saw such a significant investment going to an artist that wasn't based in Sacramento, I wanted to ask the question about whether we had any policy around investing in artists that were based locally. I understand, after talking to staff and the city attorney, that we don't have a policy about that, and there's pros and cons to be considered. But I would like to request that staff bring back some sort of ordinance for us to consider around this. This is something I hear quite often from the art community locally, especially from artists of color, and has nothing to say about the quality or qualifications of the artist for this specific project, but is more a question about local policy and artist access to funding. So, that was why I wanted to pull this item today, to ask for that staff direction before we act.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela, so to be clear, we're going to, you're okay with passing this item tonight, and you're requesting a policy to come back before the council to consider what you just described?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's good. That's very good. Let's take a motion then with that additional direction.
Mr. Mayor, you have two hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mindy. So, Katie, I just wanted to understand a little more clearly. You're talking like about an LBE requirement for art projects. Is that essentially what you're asking?
Yeah, but I mean, I'm flexible in the details, and I think we'd probably need to do some outreach in the arts community to figure out how this could work. But yeah, something along those lines.
Okay. Well, a reasonable idea to pursue, so thank you for that. I'd like to ask the city manager about clarification about the previous caller, who indicated that this particular artist in doing the installation would be violating our contractor's laws. Do you have a response to that?
I do. I have Jody Ulrich can respond to it. But in short, we're going to contract with a licensed contractor to do the installation. But Jody, are you on the call?
Yes, and that would be correct. I also have Linay Eller, who is our Public Art Program Manager, who has been overseeing this. But that is correct, that in order to do installations, they will be contracting with a licensed contractor.
And Jody, that is generally our policy, correct?
That is correct.
So, thank you for clarifying that. So, the caller does not have to contract the Contractor's State License Board. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Geta?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll go ahead and second the motion. Mr. Mayor, also, if the maker of the motion would also include as part of that direction that we follow our, that we include this as part of our arts equity policy. I know a while back, we had, when we sold surplus land, we had some money that we left over to try to target funding into art equity. So, I'd like to make sure that as we move forward and that we also include this as part of our art equity policy.
Thank you. We noted that.
Okay. So, that's part of the motion as well. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
You have a, Katie, did you make a motion? Councilmember Valenzuela? You have a motion maker? I mean, I heard a second, but I never heard a motion.
I know. I'm happy to make the motion. I'm not sure if anyone else did.
Okay, so, sorry, it's gotten a lot of back and forth. Councilmember Valenzuela makes the motion. I presume with the friendly amendment suggested by Councilmember Geta? Right, Councilmember Valenzuela? Good. Now, let's call the roll. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right. Thank you all very much. That completes the consent calendar. As the city clerk indicated at the beginning of the meeting, a number of items have been continued. We do have item 25, and we do have items 28 and 29 and 30. 30 and 25 are important items, one dealing with the Bicycle Master Plan, the other dealing with the housing element. But without objection, what I would like to do now is to first take items 28 and 29, the Aggie Square items. And I want to begin by speaking to how we intend to order the presentation tonight. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Shenier to essentially introduce the item, turn it over to Councilmember Geta, then back to me. And then I will turn it over to Leslie Fritchie, who has been our outstanding lead staff member on this. And then we will hear directly from Chancellor May and Doug Woodruff, representing Wexford. And then, of course, we will turn it over to the public and the city council. So, that's the order. But before we get into the substance of the item, I want to take a point of privilege, so to speak, to make a very important announcement, because it is a late-breaking announcement. On behalf of Vice Mayor Shenier, Councilmember Geta, the City of Sacramento, UCD, and Wexford, I want to begin this item by announcing that we have collectively reached a positive settlement agreement with Sacramento Investment Without Displacement. I will describe in a moment some of the elements. Won't go into the gory detail here of the settlement agreement. But the purpose of me making this announcement now is several-fold. One, I think it is important that as the council and the public consider these items before us, that you have this late-breaking development to consider. But mostly, I wanted to raise this first to acknowledge and thank a lot of folks. And I'm going to save my big thank yous for later. But obviously, UC Davis, Wexford, all of the people that have been involved in getting us to this point. But my main thank you tonight for this portion of the presentation is to Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, S-I-W-D. The committed, strong, and outstanding community coalition that has been rightfully saying for many, many months that Aggie Square is a great opportunity and a great, great project, but only if it is accompanied by a community benefits agreement that assures that the primary benefits of the project accrue to the neighborhoods, to the community, to people, especially to disadvantaged communities. to people, especially to disadvantaged communities. And they have done an outstanding job in not only rightfully insisting on a seat at the table. And yes, we've had some ups and downs, and there's litigation, but we're here to say that we are, tonight, moving from the posture as litigants to partners. And I'm very happy about that. I'm grateful to a lot of people and parties that I will speak to when we get into the actual project itself. But I want to thank S I W D for working with us to put forward what I believe will be a state and national model for how to achieve genuine inclusive economic development and genuinely involve the community, not just as bystanders, but as partners, as partners, to ensure that everybody benefits. What does the agreement essentially do? I'm not gonna go again through all of the detail, but it ensures that S I W D and the broader community are active, consistent partners in community engagement with UC Davis, with Wexford, and the city to implement this community benefits agreement that you'll hear about in a few minutes, both in letter and in spirit, that the city will commit to bringing forward an ordinance. And I will take responsibility for that with my colleagues, Councilmembers Chenier and Geta, to bring forward an ordinance that will ensure that for any future project where the city is a major investor, that the city commit to a CBA, Community Benefits Agreement process and product that is responsive to the affected neighborhood and neighborhoods. I want to now turn it over to Gabby Trejo, Tamika LaCleus, and Erica Ramio to speak and express their version of what, of the good news that I just had the privilege of describing. Do we have the three of them on the Zoom call? Okay, let's go. Gabby Trejo, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to council members. Gabby Trejo, I'm the president for Sacramento Investment Without Displacement. And we are, for over two and a half years, when we came together as a coalition, it was really this vision for us to center our work around people and residents. And we truly believe that the Aggie Square project, it can be something so positive for our communities. Two and a half years ago, we believed that it could be. And we still believe that it is a project that can bring so much hope and resources and opportunities for the residents that live in our communities. And so, as the mayor mentioned, we are very hopeful and excited to move forward with you all as a council, with residents, to say we are in partnership together. We are looking to the future at how we, as Sacramentoans, can become a model for other parts of the country, for our state, that we live in one of the most richest states, not just in our country, but in the world. And that moving forward, we are saying that our families matter, that investing in them and thinking about potential displacements is the way in which we care for one another, and we care for families that may not necessarily be thinking about how future projects can not just impact our families, but can actually bring opportunities for their families so that they can be successful and thrive in their communities. And so, we're just so excited and so hopeful that our families in the future, that the city council can look at what future CBAs can bring to our region and how community can be involved as part of the process in the future.
So Gabby, if I may, I just wanna, just for formality purposes, because I think the public and the council will want to know, as part of the settlement, S I W D is agreeing to support the CBA and support the Aggie Square project, correct? I just want to make sure.
And we have been, and that's part of why it is important to know that for two and a half years, we have been saying that we do support it, and we do support the project. And we are excited to move forward, to be in this place of hope, and to ensure that we create a community that is inclusive and brings, allows all our families to thrive. But yes, to answer your question, yes, we do support it.
Thank you so much. Is Tamika or Erica on as well, or are you speaking for the coalition?
Tamika here, Tamika LaCleus, Vice President of Sacramento Investment Without Displacement. Thank you, Mayor, city council members, for your time tonight. This has been, this has been a labor of love, not just love for Sacramento, but, you know, love for the people in our communities, the folks, you know, who we see every day, who we break bread with at our parks when all this is over. And, you know, seeing that as, not just as a Sacramento resident, but a resident of Del Paso Heights, that this isn't just about, you know, that this isn't just about the communities that are directly impacted. This is about the entire Sacramento region. We recognize that vision, but we also recognize that working with the cities is going to require some really bold fundamental changes to how we do business. There are folks, you know, over the past few years, who have been displaced from these communities. And what the CBA does is ensure that we have some protection in place.
Director job somewhere else.
Excuse me, whoever from the city team is not on mute, please put your phone on mute. Thank you.
That protections are in place for the future so that we don't have to look back and, you know, say, why are we making the same mistakes of the past? Robust community engagement, oversight, and accountability is gonna make all of this work. And recognizing the economic, inclusive economic development pieces that are in here that we haven't seen come from the city before, and the partners, is really, is really important. But S I W D is a coalition. We are a coalition of nonprofits, community members, and residents. Organized Sacramento, Walk Sacramento, Sacramento Housing Alliance, United Latinos, our ASME partners, our labor partners, UPTE. These are the folks Ecos. These are the folks behind the scenes who, for two and a half, three years, have put their blood and their sweat and their tears and their heart on these, at the table, fully transparent and wanting to do good for this, for this city. Thank you for the opportunity to become partners in this work, because we can get a whole lot more done together, but as long as we make sure that, you know, the community is winners, number one. We want to make sure the community is the winner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tamika. And Erica?
You're on mute, Erica.
There we go. Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council members who were a part of this process. It was really a, it was mostly hard work that was involved in this, coming from the community. And I just want to uplift the organizations involved in this that were really critical in drafting the agreement with everyone. And that begins with Oak Park Neighborhood Association, Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, Sacramento Act, Ecos, Organized Sacramento, Walk Sacramento, United Latinos, ACE, Sacramento Housing Alliance, the University Professional and Technical Employees, Sacramento Building Health Communities, Sacramento Community Land Trust, the Environmental Justice Coalition for Water, and the Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association. So this was really a labor of love, and what I've learned the most about this is that we're really excited to have these benefits in our community. And so, you know, we are very much in support of this project and, you know, all the effort that has been put behind it. And so, thank you to you all to getting us past, you know, at this point in this road. And what's not lost on me is that being a resident of Oak Park, you know, on Friday, when we were really working on this and talking about it, I got a text message from my landlord, who's gonna be selling her property. And so, you know, fighting for making sure that residents aren't displaced while being displaced, and it's not just myself, it's another tenant, so there's two of us here, really brought this home. And so, we really are thinking about the community in this and really look forward to having future CBAs and doing more work with you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you to three of you and all the members of the coalition. Again, I'm gonna save my thank yous around UC Davis and Chancellor May when I have the opportunity to introduce him. But for now, I want to give a special thank you and shout out for this part of it, for the whole thing, to Vice Mayor Chenier and Councilmember Geta, who have really, you know, from the elected official side, led the community engagement effort and done just an outstanding job. And a special shout out to Leslie Walker from the city attorney's office, who has worked around the clock these last couple of days and really ensured that we got here today. And I'm gonna thank other members of this great city team as well. But let me turn it over to Vice Mayor Chenier, Councilmember Geta, and then we're gonna launch into the actual item itself. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. And just as a note, this agreement will come to the council along with a resolution that codifies the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement. And hopefully, that will happen in a couple of weeks as well. So let me also start with a couple of thank yous, and I'll try not to be long, but we've been working on this as Gabby and Tamika and Erica said, for a long time. And this is a very exciting time for the community and for UC Davis and for Wexford. So a few thanks, first of all. I want to start with my colleague from across Stockton Boulevard, Eric Garra. We've been working very closely together on this for a long time. So thank you, Eric, for your vision on it. I want to thank Wexford. They have been a pleasure as a developer to deal with and looking at what they've done in 15 or 16 other municipalities around the country. We've grown to, we've grown in a relationship, you know, when you have two or three or four meetings every week, week in and week out, you get to know someone. And I particularly want to thank the head of it, Doug, and Travis, who have been really open to listening and trying to meet the needs of the community in which you're settling. Want to thank UC Davis and Bob Seeger and Mabel Salon and Sonia Colbert, all of whom have worked tirelessly to make this happen. Again, multiple meetings every week, sometimes every day, to really work through the issues, work through all of our bureaucracies, and get to a positive outcome. A really special thanks to Chancellor May. Chancellor May could have built Aggie Square anywhere. He chose Oak Park for a reason. He chose it, and I've said this before, and I will remember this always, he chose it to not only build out UC Davis and have a great biotech hub there, but also to help with the renaissance of a community. And we have a responsibility to make sure all of that works. I particularly want to thank the city staff, and all of our staffs did a great job. I gotta start with Allison Joe, my chief of staff, who shepherded a lot of this project through. So thank you, Allison. And Koi Saichun from Eric's staff also. They worked hand in hand to make sure we were always on the right page, going in the right directions, and helping us when things weren't working to make sure that we get it started. So I know I've left people out from there, and I apologize, but those are the keys that I wanted to say. When this project started, and I said this many times, this could have been the best thing that ever happened to the neighborhoods or the worst thing that ever happened to the neighborhoods. It's a huge project, $1.1 billion for phase one. And there were a lot of question marks around what it would be and how it would affect the neighborhoods. We did a tremendous amount of public outreach. I was looking at a chart the other day, which showed 2,600 contacts with individuals, over 500 kind of unduplicated individuals coming to different town halls, community forums, advisory committee meetings, smaller meetings. So along those ways, we did a lot of listening. We met, I think I probably went to Oak Park Neighborhood Association at least a half a dozen times to talk to them about this over the year and a half to two years. We heard three things over and over again. We heard jobs, we heard housing, and we heard transportation. Lots of other issues, and S I W D helped with us by giving us a very long list of things that we should be looking at. We appreciate that, all of which we agree with, not all of which will happen immediately, but we understand that that is actually a roadmap for us as we go to the future of things that we know our communities need. But with jobs, we got an unprecedented commitment from UC Davis that 20% in the first year, 20% of the jobs would be local, 25% after the first year. We are working with the Central Labor Council, with the Urban League, with Pro Youth and Families, with Asian Resources and La Familia, and SETA, and the Building Trades to build a one-stop recruitment and training center on the grounds of Aggie Square. So the job, and we will work with our community colleges and our K-12 systems to make sure there are pathways for young people. So when we create the jobs, we know that they can be filled by folks from the local communities. Lots of other pieces to the jobs puzzle, but the baseline here is we have a project labor agreement, CWTA, that will include 5,000 construction jobs and then 3,500 to 4,000 ongoing jobs. All good, very good jobs, and again, 20 to 25% guaranteed for the local community, but I hope a lot more as we go forward. I've also said this, and I'll end this with this, is this agreement that we finished at, what, quarter after five, 10 after five tonight, this agreement, the EIFD agreement, which we'll be voting on tonight, the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement, which we'll be voting on tonight, beginning a housing fund for Stockton Boulevard, using Stockton Boulevard as the model for what to do with an urban corridor that's, you know, found itself in need of a renaissance. All of these things are a beginning, not an end. We've signed these agreements, but this is the beginning, I believe, of a partnership with all of the groups that S I W D represents and all of our communities, and the developer and UC Davis. I think there's really no limits to what we can achieve, and so I'm just excited about it. And I will stop there and introduce Councilmember Garra.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chenier. I wanna, I do also want to, you know, personally thank, you know, the mayor and you specifically, because I felt like we had basically an intercom connected to our phones almost every day, talking the amount of hours and time that this took. And I think that level of collaboration across districts, you know, helps us break down those political boundaries and understand that, you know, what affects the Stockton Broadway community affects us all. All of those issues that we are facing, which are housing, economic opportunities, opportunities for our kids, all of those means that we have to, we have to work together and do a better job. And the outcome of today, the last meeting that we just had at 5 o'clock, was another example of the collaborative work that we need to do. And it doesn't get done without our engagement of our neighborhoods. So I want to first start off by thanking all of my neighbors, all of the folks who individually reached out, our Neighborhood Association, folks who were engaged, specifically the Land Use Committee over in Tahoe Park. The Elmhurst had their own subcommittee of folks talking about issues of transportation and impacts to the adjacent neighborhood, our business improvement districts like Frank Louie and other small businesses, and some individual ones that I spoke with, such as the owners of the Fruit Ridge Printing right there, who've been on the Boulevard for over 20 years. Eldon Bradley, who's been on the Boulevard for over 42 years. Frank Louie, who was on the corner there, and Martin Helkey, our big advocate for Colonial Heights Library, who sees how the connection of all of this business, library, education opportunity was gonna be a big piece for it. I want to thank again also, as Jay mentioned, our staff, you know, Koi Saichun, you know, won so many hours, so many hours that she's put in for us. A proud Aggie and made it very clear that, you know, she was excited about what this could hold for the community. And Allison Joe also there, them two working together. Seems like when I couldn't get ahold of her, it's because she was on the phone with Allison Joe, talking about this. I'll also do want to thank phone with Allison Joe, talking about this. I'll also do want to thank Alejandro, Madeline, and Cassandra in my office for all the responsiveness and reaching out to our neighbors who called in. So, the, this, as Erica mentioned here, and Gabby mentioned about opportunity, and Tamika about how it's a regional opportunity. It reminds me a lot that I was fortunate to participate in the Alliance for Minority Participation in STEM. This is pre Prop 209. And the power that we have here is that the biotech energy in the health system that's here can change and transform lives for so many people within less than a generation. And that's the exciting part about this project. Not only are there, as Jay mentioned, the opportunity here for construction jobs, and the fact that we focused on an apprenticeship program targeted to the zip codes in this area, giving people transferable skills is exciting, and something that they could take with them everywhere. It's not a one-time job that we're asking and we're teaching folks. And the same thing with, as you mentioned, the one-stop that's going to happen here. These are skills that, as we begin to recruit people today in this workforce, folks from our community, the benefit of Sacramento's, we have so many health partners. And by getting them into the UC Davis Health System and working with our partners now to looking at the available jobs, not only to year four, we're giving people an opportunity for economic mobility across the timeline. And most excitingly, I think, is the opportunity for our kids. I do want to thank Wexford and their team, Doug and Travis. Travis talked specifically a lot with our school district about what they've done in the 16 other cities that they've been in there, and how they've been able to create not only opportunities on the school campuses, but at their locations, the locations that Aggie Square will be. Aggie Square will be a destination for a lot of schoolkids in the neighborhood to find opportunity for the future. And that right there is one key place that we won't have to send kids to other cities to find these opportunities. They'll be right here in their own neighborhood. There's still more work to do. And I think what's important about this effort here, and what, you know, Gabby and Tamika and Erica talked about, is that we have a pathway here with the CBA. It's not only commitments of what we're doing today, but it really is a roadmap of how we work together as Aggie Square develops, because it may be four years before the first store opens. The more work we have to do, this gives us an opportunity through the CBA to look at creating an EIFD, a financing district for the four-mile stretch of Stockton Boulevard. Today, we're talking about a quarter-mile stretch. But for so long, we've asked for investments in disadvantaged communities, investments in our community like this. Well, tonight, we're going to vote on that, with also a pathway for the rest of the corridor as well, everything down from, you know, the Highway 50 all the way down to Little Saigon and Stockton and Florin. And it prepares us also for the major needs of housing that are to come. And we still have more work to do. I know our friends in the carpenters are also interested in making sure that we look at how we develop the rest of the project and ensuring that all of the work that we do in our area has good wages, good health benefits, and local hiring. And I do want to thank finally the mayor and Chancellor May for their aggressive commitment, something we've never done before, even in Golden One Center, in our current CWTA, which is a mandatory local hire requirement, that could lead that by the time this CBA is completed, one in every four jobs on the campus will be from the neighborhood. 25% is that, is our target there, and a mechanism to achieve it. It's exciting that we're here today, and I just want to thank all of the folks, the many, many folks, SWID, the mayor, our colleagues, our staff, UC Davis, and everyone in the neighborhood for the work that they did here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Exciting project to come, and looking forward to this vote.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you very, very much. So, we're getting a little out of order because Leslie Fritsch hasn't even made her presentation yet. And Jay and Eric appropriately, in their excitement, laid out a lot of the elements. I'm really glad that you did.
And Mayor, if I can, I was so excited, I forgot to mention the role that you played and how important that was, the leadership, particularly every time we got stuck, and your ability to step in, work it out, be innovative. So, I just want to say thank you. It wouldn't have happened without your leadership and your leadership along with the chancellor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that very much. So, a lot of thank yous to go around, and Leslie Fritsch certainly deserves a huge thank you, along with John Dengberg, and Danielle Foster, and Christina Pallone, and so many others from the city managers team, Scott White of my team, outstanding job, Koi and Allison, as has been mentioned, Michael Jasso, and of course Doug Woodruff from Wexford, and Travis Sheridan, and, you know, Bob Seeger and the UCD team, and especially Gary May. Y'all know the history here. This all started when we knew that Gary May was going to be the chancellor designate for UC Davis, coming from Georgia Tech University. And he had helped pioneer a similar project called Tech Square. And a number of us were so excited about the prospect, and also knew about the history, the fledgling efforts to, as we say, bring UC Davis across the river, beyond in addition to the Med Center, and how we had gotten, had many stops and starts. And so, we did not wait for Gary May to come to Davis and to Sacramento. We flew out to Atlanta, and we met with him, and the seeds were planted, and the Aggie Square idea was born. But chancellors have many responsibilities, and many opportunities, and many conflicting and counter-pressure points that could lead anybody reasonably to say, you know, this is a nice idea, but really I've got other things that I've got to put first. Well, Gary May and his team did just the opposite. They have put their heart and their resources and their expertise into this. And so, finally, UC Davis is coming across the river in a way that we imagined, in a way that is going to be great for our city, our region, and our neighborhoods. And so, let me now start the presentation, because that was all just preliminary, and turn it over to Leslie. I do think it is worth it for Leslie to go through maybe a truncated version of the PowerPoint, so that the members and the public can see how all of these pieces fit together. I do want to finally preview one point, because I know it's on members' minds and on members of the public's mind. And that is, the Community Benefits Agreement includes a $50 million commitment to the area, $20 million from the city's general fund. And some have asked, well, the council at mid-year approved $31 million for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Is this coming out of the 31 million? And the answer is not necessarily. It is a commitment for $20 million now and/or in the future, combined with the Davis resources, the EIFD resources, the SHRA resources, and, believe me, more state and federal money to come. We're going to get well north of $50 million. And so, those who say, well, if it doesn't come out of the 31, where are we getting the money? And my message to the council and to the public tonight is that $31 million is a down payment for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. With our one-time money, with our future state money, our federal money, we've got to grow that trust fund, so that we have, yes, $20 million out of our pot for Stockton Boulevard at a minimum, but so we also have the resources and the opportunity to subsidize, incentivize, and build more workforce and affordable housing throughout our city. That is our priority citywide. But if we don't take advantage of this moment with a live project to say, let's put the first $20 million, or 20 million at some point, into being a partner here, then we will be missing and losing an opportunity. But it doesn't have to come out of the first 31, it's over time. Leslie, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers Chenier and Geta. It's indeed my pleasure to be here tonight, but I would be remiss if I didn't turn the podium and turn the mic over to Chancellor May, who has made this possible. His original commitment to Aggie Square, and Aggie Square in Sacramento, is why we're here today. So, I'd like to introduce Chancellor May, if I could.
Welcome, Chancellor May.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Chenier, and members of the city council. I'm really pleased to be here for this presentation, discussion, and vote on Aggie Square and the proposed Community Benefits Partnership Agreement and the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. Now, this CBPA is such an important milestone. It earmarks specific funding and resources for the neighborhoods surrounding Aggie Square, and it delivers on our commitment, a commitment which we have made from the outset of the project, to consider neighborhood priorities and ensure that local residents are included in the success story that will be Aggie Square. I want to thank all of the neighborhood leaders who served on our community committees, and all of the residents who shared their input to help guide this vision for Aggie Square. I hope they continue to participate, as those community voices are important and needed each step of the way. I also want to thank Jim Behrens, and Doug Woodruff, and Travis Sheridan, and all the team at Wexford Science and Technology. Aggie Square represents a significant investment in the Sacramento region. It's estimated that Aggie Square will generate $5 billion in economic impact each year. In this first phase, we also expect that Aggie Square will generate millions annually in new revenues for the city of Sacramento. Aggie Square will bring new jobs, investments in affordable housing, youth programs, and workforce training for the surrounding neighborhoods. Funding will also be provided to support the city's improvements along Stockton Boulevard. So, I'm just thrilled with the progress that we've made since 2017, when Mayor Steinberg and I first announced that collaboration after that trip to Atlanta on Aggie Square. UC Davis has had a strong working relationship and partnership with the city, and I'm looking forward to strengthening our relations even further for the benefit of our broader communities. Together, we have the chance to create opportunity and serve the community in transformational new ways. So, thank you all, all my friends and partners in the city council and in the community for your support of Aggie Square, and for helping us to formalize this key milestone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor May, and...
Very good. Chancellor, thank you. And Leslie, why don't you describe the pieces of this very important puzzle?
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll just give a very truncated presentation, because I found that many before me have stolen the lines that I was going to talk about, and some of the highlights that we've been able to achieve together. So, we will give you a brief overview of the project, the economic benefits, the highlights of the preliminary business terms, and then, of course, the Community Partnership Benefits Agreement, which we've talked of so many times today. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Seeger, who's going to just remind everyone about what the Aggie Square project is about from a physical standpoint. And so, Bob?
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I've had the privilege of leading the planning effort for Aggie Square from the beginning for Chancellor May, and I'm just really honored to have met so many people in Sacramento who have really advocated that it be the best possible project, and thanks to everybody tonight. So, if we could have the first slide, I'll just take you, just a couple slides, just a brief reminder of the scope of the project. And then Leslie will get directly into the Community Benefits Package.
Okay, bear with me just a second.
Sure. I'll say, while Leslie's pulling that up, it's just as well, you know, thanks to the entire UC Davis team, you know, Gabby used, and Tamika used the word "slavery love" earlier, and there really has been a large and talented UC Davis team putting their hearts into this effort for these last three years, to make this project all it could be, not just for the university, but to attract investment to Sacramento and to generate these kinds of benefits for our neighbors. And UC Davis is really looking forward to being the best possible neighbor we can be in Sacramento. So, yeah, if we can go up one...
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Okay, there we go.
Let me just do the full screen for you there, Bob.
Great. Okay, so I won't go into great detail, everybody, but I'll just take you on a brief tour. Very upper-left of this slide, the big building that you can see partially is the UC Davis Hospital. And then you come down Stockton Boulevard, you can see labeled to Second Avenue. And then those, that cluster of buildings, the four buildings, make up Phase One of Aggie Square. And I'll just take you on a very brief tour, but I'll do it in the context of the Community Benefits Agreement that we're here tonight to talk about. So, that top label where it says "Life Science, Technology, and Engineering Buildings", those are two lab buildings focused on life sciences, but other lab activity will happen there as well. That, together, those two buildings make up about 600,000 square feet. The thing that's different about Aggie Square from the typical university project is the university will only occupy about half that space. And the other half of that space is where private industry will be attracted to invest in Sacramento, to be near and to leverage UC Davis research. It's where we'll have educational partnerships and community partnerships as well. So, when you hear later tonight about training for, Wexford will tell you that in innovation districts like this, 20 to 35% of the jobs do not require a four-year or higher degree. So, when you hear about training in life sciences and technology, that's what will happen in those buildings, in addition to the university and the private sector investment. As you continue around to the right, it says Lifelong Learning. University program that will anchor that space is Continuing Professional Education. That's our workforce training arm of the university, as well as public scholarship and engagement, and public-facing programs that'll be a home base for all the folks at the university who are doing public-facing work. So, when you hear later about the youth programs and the workforce training collaboratives that are going to evolve for our entire community, that will be happening in the Lifelong Learning Building. Continue around down lower right, it says Innovation Infrastructure. Wexford is bringing these shared lab and office space. So, if you're a new startup, you're starting a new business that's either coming out of UC Davis work, or any new business in these areas in Sacramento, there'll be leasable benchtop and tech space where you can start your business and grow it into a larger business and stay in Sacramento. That'll happen in that Innovation Infrastructure space. Then it says Public Infrastructure down at the bottom. Aggie Square is a big new public space at the heart of the district, and then right at Third Avenue in Stockton, we have what we call the Market Plaza, with a farmer's market pavilion and an open door of public space that connects the activity in Aggie Square and the university to our neighbors in our neighborhood. The next coming up says Food and Health. That's actually our residential building with housing primarily for students, but that'll pick up some of the demand that Aggie Square generates and keep it onsite. And you'll hear a lot more about the larger housing initiatives that are coming out of the project in just a minute. And that's also the location for the Alice Waters Institute for Edible Education, which is all about healthy food for schoolkids. Last, up in the upper left, says Quarter of Aggie Square, and I won't go into detail, but those are just, if you look at the bullets, those are just the first few undergraduate programs. You can now take a full 15-unit course of study as an undergraduate in Sacramento at Aggie Square. They started virtually in the transformative justice studies this past fall. And you can see how those studies are going to engage people in our community with student engagement, and really take advantage of the diversity that we find, not just on the campus, but in our neighborhoods in Sacramento. So, that's a brief overview of just the project and its buildings, but really, what's important is what's going to go on there. And that's just a view, standing in Aggie Square, a few trees were taken out, so you could see better, but those are the two lab buildings that look similar. As you look towards the hospital, and on the right is the Lifelong Learning Building. On the left is the Alice Waters Institute and the Housing Project, and the new public space at Aggie Square.
So, thank you, Bob. Yeah, I wanted to touch on some of the overall economic benefits of the project. As mentioned by Chancellor May, the project is going to be generating about $1 billion in capital investment. What that means for our Six County region is that equals about $5 billion in annual impact. And on the ground, that means 5,000 construction jobs, and 35,000 to 4,000 permanent jobs will be located at Aggie Square. And certainly, this is in alignment with our regional strategy, the Regional Prosperity Plan, and our recently adopted scale-up strategy focusing on health as one of the primary health indicators and growth opportunities for Sacramento. So, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the other part of the equation, which is some financial assistance that's going to be provided for the project. In October, the council approved the formation of a working group to start looking into an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, which would take in basically the campus area of the looking into an enhanced infrastructure financing district, which would take in basically the campus area of the UC Davis campus on Stockton Boulevard. And the uses of that enhanced infrastructure financing district would offset some of the public infrastructure that was needed for the project. So the business terms that's included in your in your staff report tonight and talks about the reimbursement to Wexford as the master developer of the project of up to $30 million in Aggie Square public infrastructure. Those funds, as I mentioned, come from the resources generated by the project itself. So they're not city funding. It is funding that is going to be generated by property tax that is generated at the project. So Councilmember Chenier and Councilmember Gara and the mayor all have talked about some of the community engagement tonight. I'm pleased to be with you and be with S I W D tonight as they have been certainly an important partner in the community outreach that we've done since 2018. There have been over 90 community meetings. There was established a community advisory committee for Aggie Square early on. And since the fall, we've had working groups by the topic area and held community town halls for each of the elements in the CBPA. So this just shows very quickly, early on, I think, according to Bob, I think this is 2018, that the focus of the community in those early meetings was jobs, workforce development, housing, and transportation. And then this next slide shows you a few more issues and concerns that the neighbor had moving neighborhood had moving forward as we were in gauging them on the community portions of the project. So one thing that was loud and clear and one of the main areas of concern was a topic that we're experiencing throughout Sacramento, and that is the need for more affordable housing. So moving forward, there has been a commitment and a policy to establish $50 million of an affordable housing fund for the Stockton Boulevard area. A good chunk of that funding would come from the E I F D itself. The funds that will be generated over the 45-year life of the EFID, 20% of those funds would be used for affordable housing within the area. 29 million is envisioned to come from city and S H R A resources. But certainly the council will need to be taking actions to approve those on particular projects. And then the third component is a $5 million affordable housing program, which is specifically designed for anti-displacement efforts and residential stabilization activities. And this would be funded by $2.5 million in philanthropic contributions. And that philanthropic amount would be matched by $2.5 million from UC Davis. So we're pleased to bring forward kind of this package of assistance in the area of affordable housing as part of the community benefit partnership agreement. So I'm going to turn it over to someone I'm very proud to have worked with over the past few few months. And that is Travis Sheridan of Wexford. Wexford Science and Technology, who will be serving as the master developer for this project, has done this type of innovation district in 15 other locations and have brought bring to Sacramento a huge degree of success and experience in really the development of not only the projects, but how those projects can benefit the area. So I'm going to turn it over to Travis.
Hey, thanks Leslie and thanks Sacramento City Council members and Mayor and Chancellor May and the folks from U C D. A lot of this has been discussed, but I want to hit a couple of highlights and also frame it, these next few slides. In a framework that I often think about when we're doing these types of community benefit programs and agreements. And that is, what is the action and then what is the desired outcome? And so when we're looking at this job slide and the elements of the jobs that are available now at UC Davis Health and the Sacramento campus, the the construction jobs that will that will occur, and then the ongoing jobs. I really look at this as ways to prosper at Aggie Square and for the community to prosper and participate. I think Bob might have mentioned, when we look across our innovation districts and knowledge communities across the United States, anywhere between 25 and 40% of the jobs that exist do not require a formal four-year education. We are big fans of higher education. We encourage people to pursue higher education. But we don't want that to be a barrier to a person pursuing a viable career in the sciences and the STEM disciplines. And that's often through connections and relationships and partnerships with community colleges and local training programs, which will move us to our the next slide. And those training, we are really excited to help stand up in partnership with the city, a one-stop center on the Aggie Square campus with the groups that are mentioned here, led by SETA and a number of other local organizations. It's one thing to have an aggressive hiring goal. It's another thing to put the resources together so that the 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 community is ready to secure those opportunities. And so we think that this will be a nice partnership and a nice element to include so that the we can really not just meet, but exceed those those targets.
And Travis, really quickly, Asian Resources didn't make it onto that list, but they've certainly been a partner and will be going forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chenier. Next slide. When I look at this slide, and this is one of the things that we've had a lot of success with in other communities and we're excited to roll out here. You know, the action is stated, but the outcome is really what I'd what I'd say is engage at Aggie Square. We will be setting up an ongoing fund that neighbors will be able to help direct. Think of it as a type of participatory budgeting where approximately $150,000 a year, a community partnership will be able to direct those funds to the areas of workforce, youth programming, public art or place making, entrepreneurial support. We have broad categories, but the community gets to direct that specifically. And that is for the life of the project. And so that ability to direct $150,000 every single year. One of the things that a lot of neighborhood groups struggle with is sustainable funding that can be around for planning purposes. And so to have $150,000 a year to be able to create plans around that and leverage that for other resources will be really critical. Councilmember Gata mentioned our our constant interest and desire to make sure that kids are part of this. We often refer to the K through 12 population, but we don't want to forget the transition age youth. You know, those young people that are 18 to 24 years old. They may not use, I always say those those that crew may not use the word entrepreneur, but they often they often use the word hustler to mean the exact same thing. And so the ability to have youth program programming, because with kids, we want them to explore at at Aggie Square and see what careers could be available to them. And we also want to engage the teachers so that educators can play a bit a larger role in closing the gap that exists between industry and education. Next slide, please. And then just a couple more pieces. We know that there are strong business districts up and down and around Aggie Square. One of the things that I think is really critical, the National Business Incubator Association did a study and showed that 85% of businesses that go through an incubator or startup spaces, when they launch out, they launch in the immediate area. And so the ability for for companies that are starting at Aggie Square to occupy real estate outside of Aggie Square in the existing infrastructure, that is our business districts in close proximity is really critical. So to create these opportunities for strategic planning so that we can plan for the growth of these these companies that will outgrow Aggie Square and land in our surrounding business districts. And then also really leveraging procurement opportunities, because that's a great opportunity for people to connect at Aggie Square and get connected to the resources. And then this last slide that I'll mention, really, I look at this as belonging at Aggie Square. Creating spaces accessible to the public, both indoor and outdoor spaces for public convening so people can meet, connect, grow, and interact. Outdoor spaces for people to play because play is important. Things like concerts in the park or movie, you know, movie series, a place for people to really get connected and experience the the physical assets that are Aggie Square. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Leslie. Thank you.
So another key element that was brought up in many community meetings is the a need to make sure that there's transportation enhancements in and around Aggie Square so that people can walk, bike, that we work on rapid transit. So there have been a number of different initiatives that have been launched by our Public Works Department for the Stockton Boulevard corridor plan, as well as Vision Zero plans. And a couple other elements that are brought forward as part of this overall project is up to $1.1 million will be funded by UC Davis for enhancements to the Stockton Boulevard and Broadway intersection. That is one intersection that has ripe with issues related to transportation. And especially if you're on a bike or if you're a pedestrian trying to cross that street, making sure that that intersection is is safe is going to be a critical part as we move forward. In addition to that, there is going to be a campus access study for pedestrians and cyclists so that you can easily move through the campus and into the surrounding neighborhoods. And there'll be street improvements at Second Avenue and Third and Stockton and new parking structures to accommodate the surface parking that is currently where Aggie Square will be built. So in short, I'll just give this quick highlights. There's envisioned to be $50 million designated for affordable housing, jobs for local residents, the annual fund for neighborhood priorities, the Broadway and Stockton improvements that I just mentioned, and a strong connection to the adjacent and small businesses and community access to space and resources. But all of those things are very good and they're very good to have on paper. But what is really going to be the telling and what's going to be the success of the Aggie Square project is how it really interfaces with the community in a very active and transparent way. And so the the first step is the approval of the E I F D on April the 13th. But the next section is really where we want to be held accountable. And with the decisions and with the conversations that have occurred with S I W D, there's been a commitment to hold community accountability meetings hosted by S I W D. So we can go through the department, go through the agreement and make sure there's a regular reporting and they can held hold the partners accountable. Establishment of working groups by topic area, quarterly reporting on jobs at Aggie Square, and an annual report on all of the elements that are contained within the document itself. And we've already established quarterly community forums, so mark your calendars from five to seven on June the 16th, September the 15th, and December the 15th. We'll see you back here then so that we can begin our community forum process. And then, of course, we'll have ongoing communications with the neighborhood associations, the P bids, and S I W D. So the work done thus far is just to start with the real work ahead and implementation. And staff looks forward to working with the community, U C D, and Wexford on making Aggie Square a model for inclusive economic development. So I want to also express my thanks for UC Davis and the chancellor and all of the the folks that we've been working with at the UC Davis staff, as well as Wexford. Travis and Doug have been a pleasure to work with thus far, and we look forward to an ongoing and productive relationship moving forward. But I also would be remiss if I didn't actually extend my my thanks to the leadership of the mayor and the councilmembers Chenier and Geta, as well as the city staff people, because I I get to be here giving this presentation tonight. But it wouldn't have happened without Allison Joe and Koi Ziturn. They're the ones that I think have kept us on task in making sure that this can can move forward, as well as other folks in other departments that I get the joy of working with, and that's Eric Frederick, Sherry Smith, Joe Cirillo, Jeff Massey, and Danielle Foster, Christina Pallone, and Jennifer Donlin Wyatt. And then I still consider him a city employee, but he's not. And that's John Dankberg, who was very helpful in the negotiation of the business terms. So with that, we are available for any questions that you might have. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you again, Leslie. Outstanding work. I think what we're going to do next is we're going to turn it over to the public for public testimony. We have how many speakers, Madam Clerk?
I have 24 speakers.
Okay, then we'll turn it over to council for questions, comments, and consideration.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Frank Louie. I am the executive director of the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We are in support of the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement, along with the E I F D. We have the opportunity to transform our commercial corridor with both private and public investments. Aggie Square is good, I mean, great for the Boulevard, for it will drive more activity, increase private investment south of Broadway. It's going to be a catalyst to add about 35 to 4,000 jobs that will help bolster our local economy. $50 million will be commitment to the housing, which is significant, with approximately 800-plus units currently planned on the Boulevard and the city's ongoing efforts to focus on programs to keep local residents in place and assist with home repairs and rental assistance. The Community Benefits Partnership Agreement has a commitment to working with our ethically diverse businesses on the Boulevard with procurement opportunities. In closing, I'd like to thank Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Chenier, Councilman Garrett, Leslie Pritzy and her team, along with UC Davis Chancellor May, Bob Seeger, the Wexford developer, and most importantly, our community stakeholders, including SAC IDWD, for bringing this once-in-a-lifetime economic opportunity to our community. My board chairman, Elgin Bradley, and I have spent nearly 75 years of our lives as business owners on the Boulevard. We are truly appreciative, grateful of everyone's effort to reimagine and rebuild Stockton Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Patricia Ramirez, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm calling and speaking on items 28 and 29. 5,000 jobs are good, but not all jobs are created equal. The reality is, in the era of COVID-19, construction workers and their families need to have access to healthcare. Why aren't all contractors on this project going to be required to provide their workers' access to healthcare? If UC Davis and the city cares about training and education, then why aren't all aspects of the project going to be requiring to utilize state-certified apprenticeship? Why are you making, why are you not making sure our essential workers can safely earn their way with dignity and respect? Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, city of Sacramento, mayor and council. I have a letter that I would like to read into the record to the city of Sacramento, mayor and council, New City Hall, 915 I Street, Sacramento, California, 95814. From Stockton Boulevard Partnership, 5625 Stockton Boulevard, Sacramento, California, 95824.
You have two minutes, sir.
Here's Mayor Steinberg and honorable members of the Sacramento City Council. This letter expresses our support of the Community Benefits Agreement between UC Davis, Wexford Science and Technology, and the city of Sacramento. The Stockton Boulevard Partnership mission is to advocate on behalf of property and business owners in the public policy and economic development, to implement programs to improve security, safety, cleanliness, and positively impact the public image of the Stockton Boulevard business card. We believe that the Community Benefits Agreement aligns with our mission to bring about economic development responsibility. The agreement offers great promise for our neighborhood. It will mean more jobs for local residents, opportunities for businesses, youth education programs, better transportation, and affordable housing to benefit residents and communities of interest. Our vision is that the Community Benefits Agreement will provide a merch needed resource for our neighborhood and surrounding businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Elgin Bradley, Chairman, Stockton Boulevard Partnership.
Thank you, Elgin.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Robert Cooks with Chief Metal Workers Union, Local Number 104, calling in support of the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement. We wanted to emphasize the 5,000-plus construction jobs that are going to help the economy and families in the surrounding area. Please vote in support of this agreement. Thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good morning, I mean, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Carl Pinho. I am the president of the Sacramento Sierra Construction Trades Council and the business manager, financial secretary, treasurer of Ironworkers Local 118. Tonight, I come before you on behalf of the members of Local 118 as we express our support in the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement, the Community Workforce Training Agreement, and the EIFD, along with the 5,000 construction jobs this project will create. It will also create career opportunities for individuals who are not currently involved with a trade. Plus, the aftermath will be a gateway for numerous residents in the surrounding area to achieve gainful employment. Aggie Square can be catalyst for the future projects within the Sacramento area for years to come. I encourage all of you to vote in support. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Good evening. I'll make it short. My name is Jesse Thane with the Operating Engineers Local Union 3, and we fully support the Aggie Square project and the Community Benefits Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Noah Painter. I'm here testifying this evening on behalf of IBW Local 340. Thanks for allowing me the time to speak this evening, and I'll be brief. The Aggie Square project is a catalyst project for our city and the region. Investment over $1.1 billion in medical technology and innovation along Stockton Boulevard cannot be overstated. It's understandable that some organizations were concerned about the impact that this project may have on the surrounding community. The CBA that is before you this evening does an excellent job to address those concerns, which include local hiring, affordable housing, and anti-displacement. The commitment to address affordable housing and the local hiring requirements are some of the tools that will ensure low and moderate income families have the ability to benefit from the investment that UC Davis is making in our community. I want to commend city staff, including Howard Chan, Michael Jasso, Leslie Fritzy, and the rest of their teams for the work that they've done. I also want to commend Mayor Steinberg and his staff, Councilmember Shanir, Ann Garrett, and mayor staff for their hard work addressing the numerous concerns raised via the public outreach process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. My name is Mario Cardoza with the Operating Engineers Local Union Number 3, and we fully support the Aggie Square project and the Community Benefits Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Sanchez. I'm a longtime Sacramento resident. I'd like to speak on the Aggie Square Development Item 28 and 29. I understand that part of the project will be covered by a CWA, and the affordable and student housing aspect will not be covered under this CWA. I would like to know why affordable and student housing was carved out of this CWA? And secondly, if affordable and student housing are not covered, what is going to guarantee that workers on the project will have access to healthcare for themselves and their families? And what will guarantee that contractors will use state-certified apprenticeships?
Thank you for your-
And I'd like to, oh, sorry. I just would like to conclude with, healthcare is very important to workers, especially in the middle of a pandemic, and since UC Davis is a learning institution, any contractors involved in the Aggie Square development should reinvest in training by using state-certified apprenticeships. So, therefore, I believe healthcare and apprenticeship should be included in the CBA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the Sacramento City Council. I'm Nicole Gary. I'm with the Assistant Builders and Contractors Northern California Chapter. ABC NorCal represents working Sacramentoans who build commercial, industrial, and affordable housing projects and is a provider of state and federally approved apprenticeship programs in carpentry, construction craft labor, electrical painting, and plumbing that connect students, women, those in underserved communities, reentering citizens, and veterans, among many others, with rewarding careers in construction. As a proud Aggie myself, I am not so proud today. We definitely applaud the goal of the Aggie Square team members who proposed the agreement to employ local economically disadvantaged pre-apprentice and entry-level hires, veteran, and women-owned businesses, but we do not applaud that the majority of diverse workers who live in the city will now be denied the opportunity to earn prevailing wages by not being welcome to work on a project with the 5,000 direct construction jobs and $1.1 billion in economic impact. People like Luati Meadows, somebody who was doing odd jobs and forever trapped in fast food, home services, who was homeless and single with two children, who reached out through the Women's Empowerment Program and was connected to our ABC NorCal Pre-Ap apprenticeship Program. She is now a graduate and on her way to a career in construction. People like Luati will not have the opportunity to work on this project due to the CWTA that is proposed with the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. People like Luati and many others, and we definitely have did some research, and there is close to 40 apprentices currently in some training programs, ours and others, who are located in these targeted zip codes, who are no longer going to have an opportunity to work on this project. So, I'm deeply saddened by what has occurred, and I'm hoping that what I heard tonight about inclusivity will be embraced, and we can get to some agreements where these apprentices can be utilized-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you so much for your time, and please be inclusive in the way you move your city forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is William Harrell. I'm a resident in District 5. I'm a business owner as well in District 5, adjunct professor in architecture at Kissimmee River College. Wanted to really give high praise to the mayor and the council for such a fantastic and wonderful, high-profile project. I reached back to my emails dated July 2017 where I asked the council member, need to have a meeting about Aggie Square to discuss minority participation in the design phase of this project, because it's such a high-profile project. And unfortunately, I also asked during the last few months, was there any goals for design participation? Now, mind you, this is important for my students. What I tell my architectural students, their dreams of becoming architects in Sacramento. And I am one of the 2% black licensed architects in the country. And one of the things that I was concerned about was, did the city, could the city, take the opportunity to ask the architects and the developers, what are they doing to stymie and turn the tide on systemic racism and cultural bias in the design profession? And I say this without malice, because I believe that this is a great project, and without ill intent toward the folks who are the architects and the developers. But I'd like the city to ask-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
...in making things happen. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mark Delatori, and I am the senior agent for the Carpenters Union here in Sacramento, and I represent 300-plus members out of Carpenters Local 46 and 9109. And I just want to say that we very much support the Aggie Square development, but I would like to see an amendment to the CBA and have some prequal language implemented into it to protect the student housing, which is not covered by the PLA. I understand the student housing is 15% of the project, but 15% of $1 billion is a big deal. And some of the prequal language we like to see is apprenticeship language, right? So, to give, you know, field and train opportunities and avenues to the workforce, we'd also like to see healthcare. You know, healthcare has never been more important than this today, living in a pandemic with this COVID. I mean, this should be a mandatory requirement. We would also like to see local hire. You know, we think you should reinvest in your community and your local workers and your local contractors. So, as leaders of our city and communities, I know supporting this development will create thousands of jobs on the inside for the community, but we also need to protect the jobs on the outside as well. So, I'm asking you guys to make an amendment to the CBA and install some prequal language. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is John Rector, and I'm with Operating Engineers Local Union Number 3. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their diligent efforts in securing this project and the 5,000 building trades jobs it will bring to the area, and Operating Engineers Local 3 supports this project fully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city councilmembers. I'm Kevin Ferrer, the executive director of the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. And we fully support the Community Benefits Agreement. That also has a CWTA attached to it as well that will create 5,000 construction jobs as well as create career pathways through our 32 state-registered approved programs, apprenticeship programs, for members of the community that they may have opportunities into the building and construction trades. We ask that the city council have a unanimous support for the Aggie Square project and the EIFD as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Jesse Greer with the Operating Engineers Local Number 3. We fully support the Aggie Square project and the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement and the 5,000 construction jobs with the career opportunities in the building trades for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Aloha, Mayor Steinberg and city council. My name is Mitchell Beckel. I'm calling on behalf of the Ironworkers Local 118 here in Sacramento. I'm calling in today to support for items 28 and 29. Aggie Square is a transformational project, not only for the city but for its citizens as well. The Community Benefits Partnership Agreement will provide an opportunity for folks that have previously not been associated with the building trades before, and give them a path to upward economic mobility in Sacramento. This is an inclusive development that we are striving so hard to create here in our capital. Not only does this project pave the way for an inclusive, diverse, and local workforce, but it extends those benefits to the neighborhood as well. The partnership establishes a $50 million affordable housing fund, which will be used to provide housing assistance and new housing developments, which, as everyone knows in Sacramento, we desperately need. I urge you to support this project, this partnership, and Sacramento's future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. This is David Nelson. I'm the director of public policy for the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce, and just calling in to support this Community Benefits Agreement for Aggie Square. The chamber has worked very proactively with the other ethnic chambers, as well as Sacramento Builders Exchange, to craft this addendum for the PLA that supports local small businesses. And we, this agreement is called the Minority and Veterans Opportunity Program, and is focused on ensuring that there is a local participation opportunity for minority and veteran-owned firms within Sacramento County, as well as other surrounding counties of Sacramento. So, we are very proud to stand with the city, as well as UC Davis and Westford, as well as the trade unions, to ensure that local small businesses are supported through this agreement with the PLA for Aggie Square and the Sacramento Asian Chamber voices its support for Aggie Square. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. This is Eric Kristen. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
I represent contractors from throughout the Sacramento region, all of whom would love the opportunity to employ their apprentices, workers, subs, generals, on this project. But the discriminatory nature and exclusionary nature of a project labor agreement would preclude them from being able to do that. There has been no outreach to this community that represents the 86% of the construction workforce that is union-free. Instead, there's been backroom deals, behind-the-scenes negotiations, to exclude this entire segment of the industry. It will not be stood for. We will not be quiet about this. There will be repercussions with regards to anyone that enters into a PLA that excludes the majority of the industry. Project labor agreements, everybody knows what they are. They are political documents that seek to add another layer of bureaucracy that make it difficult for those that choose to be union-free. My contractors are the largest electrical contractors in the entire region, largest mechanical contractors, and on and on. They will not bid this work because they do not choose to have their workers have pay robbed from them in the form of provisions in PLAs that force workers to pay the union health, welfare, and pension plans they will never invest in. So, if they're not going to invest in them, those workers lose over $20 per hour. That's what you're asking them to do under a project labor agreement. So, the big labor special interests that apparently can't compete but for the welfare of a project labor agreement have been working with the people that got elected to make this a condition of any developer that does this work, forcing the general contractor to have to negotiate, quote-unquote, the PLA. This is unacceptable. The PLA has been a disaster for the city. There's been recently a request for tens of millions of dollars additional money to be spent on the convention-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you for listening to this. Please do the right thing and have a fair PLA that allows everyone to be allowed and be negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, mayor and city council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association, proud support of item 28 and the entire Aggie Square project. This is a winner for the city of Sacramento. Thank you so much for the developer, UC Davis, and of course, the leadership of the city council and you, mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm a resident of District 5 and vice president of Oak Park Neighborhood Association. First, I'm really encouraged to hear of the newly reached agreement with S I W D and their coalition members. We're one of those members. Aggie Square is a project of enormous impact, and this is an important first step to ensuring community members aren't displaced and can benefit directly from jobs and economic development that come as a result of this. But with that, I believe that only giving the community a few days over the weekend to review a 91-page document is just not enough. Considering that an agreement was reached just minutes before this city council meeting tonight- tonight, we would request that the city postpone this vote for two weeks to allow time to review all the documents, including the details of the agreement with SIWD. I believe this could go a long way to building trust around the project, and perhaps the city can vote on both of these things at the same time for continuity. Lastly, Oak Park Neighborhood Association is supportive of the community fund that but we believe that 158 grand per year is not enough to make a real impact. As one of our neighbors pointed out, it's not even the equivalent of one doctor's salary per year. And the question I have is, if this item is passed tonight, does that mean that that amount is finalized? Or is there room to discuss this with the community? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having this discussion tonight. This is Rose Cabral with just in District Six. I felt like since I've been a resident engaged in this project since early 2018, I felt that I had to call in tonight during this momentous occasion. I do want to thank you all for coming this far. I know it was a long road. I know how far you've all come, so I do want to acknowledge and recognize that. I'm just calling in tonight more as a reminder for the future. A reminder, I know Katie just said, but the CPPA was released late Thursday night before a holiday weekend, a 90-plus-page document to review in three days. It's very hard for a community to do, and I don't know if it was translated in different languages, but we have people in our neighborhoods that speak languages other than English. So if we want to really engage those communities, we need to do that in a way that allows them to engage. I also want to share a reminder that we don't have to wait until the 11th hour to collaborate and listen to the community. I've been sitting in these meetings since 2018, asking for the community to be involved. And just a half an hour before this meeting, the community is now involved. So we don't have to wait that long, right? We can do these conversations. We can have these conversations before to save a lot of our time. And also, I want to just give a reminder that right now in neighborhoods around Aggie Square, we are seeing homes going for $100,000 over the asking price, multiple houses. So the affordable housing conversation has to be, I would like to see the details of that, the specifics of that, because all of our neighbors who were here two years ago, a lot of them are already displaced and out of the neighborhood. So if we're going to wait another two years, we're going to have even more neighbors that are no longer with us.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thanks. I know Erica just said she, her, her, her home is going away. Anyways, thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments.
I look forward to seeing what's happening in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And we have about 10 more callers. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
So please, yes, Sacramento Central Labor Council. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, vice mayor, and council member Garrett, who made sure workers' voices were at the table and heard in the development of this Community Benefits Agreement. It's been a long road, but I'm glad we got to an outcome that sets a new precedent in our region around the needs of our most impacted communities and establishing that businesses must consider those needs if they want public funding. With the passage of tonight, CBA will ensure that thousands of local residents will have a career path in the building and construction trades, receiving livable wages, healthcare, and retirement. Many of these folks will come from Sacramento's most economically depressed zip codes. But beyond construction, the CBA will ensure that at least 25% of Aggie Square's entire workforce will come from the four zip codes mentioned earlier. This means that local people will get the over 3,000 jobs that will eventually be created at Aggie Square. We're also glad to receive the assurances of the CBA from the city, Westford, and the UC that they will honor collective bargaining agreements for all classification of jobs represented by current UC employees. And while not included in the final CBA, we hope that the future tenants will sign labor peace agreements in good faith with worker unions to ensure that workers won't be subjected to the same intimidation tactics we see at places like Amazon, Silicon Valley, tech companies, and other hospitals in our area. This CBA establishes an onsite, independently operated, yet collaboratively coordinated job resource center that will act as a connector between job seekers and employers, providing the trainings and skills needed for the jobs to come, all while holding all parties accountable to the 25% local hire provision. Finally, as workers are bearing the brunt of this housing crisis, we're glad to see 50 million committed for the affordable housing component. And we know how bad the problem is when UC Davis doctors, career doctors just starting in the profession can't afford to pay the rent. 50 million is a good start, not nearly enough, but we hope there's more to come in the future. This is good progress for Sacramento, and, you know, let's not make the enemy, the perfect enemy of the good. We have a lot to praise in the CBA tonight, so we respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and members of the public. I'm Richard Markison. I'm a resident of Council District Seven. Councilman Jennings, how are you? This is an exciting night, lots of opportunities here in Sacramento. But as we've all learned, sometimes some people are left out of it. And so I'm talking to you tonight on behalf of the 31 apprentices, young men and women in a five-year electrical apprenticeship program indentured in WICA's state-approved apprenticeship program. They will be left out of any construction opportunities if the PLA that Westford imposes on their general contractor looks at all like the city's own project labor agreement that specifically excludes apprentices from non-union apprenticeship programs, even though we train to the same minimum industry training criteria. So on behalf of the 31 apprentices, who I suspect will not have the opportunity to work on this fantastic new project, you know, I express my apology. It's unfortunate that the decision was made early on that the only way that this project would proceed is with an exclusionary project labor agreement, and it's truly unfortunate that we cannot be a truly inclusive community to realize the potential that this project has for everyone. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Yes. This is Morgan Oldy. Good evening. I'm the President, Western District Council of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers. We support the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement and the Community Workforce Training Agreement and the 5,000 construction jobs with the career opportunities in the building trades for the community. And we support the EIFD for the enhanced infrastructure financing that benefits the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Lambert from District Two. I wanted to send a kudos to Mayor Steinberg on this project. As I studied and listened to his role, see, that's impressive that he flew out to Georgia Tech to work with a black man who eventually came to UC. And this is just an example of including black people into big visionary moves. Shout out to the Mayor Steinberg. It's the reason why he's very popular in Del Paso Heights, and I hope that once this is agreed on, that they'll apply that to the Marysville Boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard corridor, because that region needs a lot of assistance too. But to City Councilperson Shanir Nguera too, that's, this is visionary, but I wanted to make sure Mayor Steinberg knew that for him to fly to Atlanta or wherever Georgia Tech is, before he even came here, that's, that's an example of inclusive economics. So I wanted him to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lambert.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Murphy, and I'm the CEO for the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange. SRBX is the construction industry's oldest and largest association in Sacramento region, and our membership includes area general contractors, subcontractors, architects, engineers, and material suppliers. I would like to convey SRBX's enthusiastic support for the Aggie Square project. Aggie Square will bring extensive benefit to both the city and communities surrounding the proposed development, benefits which include the construction of much-needed affordable housing, workforce development for residents of disadvantaged neighborhoods, solutions to address and fund neighborhood priorities, and provide improvements to surrounding materials. Of particular interest to my organization is the projected 5,000-plus construction jobs for the Aggie Square campus. These jobs come with an emphasis on local hiring and construction apprenticeship opportunities, and SRBX looks forward to promoting the range of construction opportunities associated with Aggie Square, helping to ensure that local employment provisions are not only met, but surpassed. As with the Sacramento Entertainment and Sports Complex, Aggie Square will be a tremendous catalyst that will provide billions of dollars of economic impact for our region. Thank you for your vote in favor of Aggie Square.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Caller, please turn down the device on which you're watching the council meeting. It's your turn to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Amanda Blackwood. I'm addressing you tonight as the President and CEO of the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce, the largest and most prominent voice of business in our six-county region, representing over 1,400 local businesses. Before you tonight is an opportunity to create a private-public partnership that will be a catalyst for inclusive economic development, drive 5 billion annually into our regional economy, 25,000 jobs, and 5 million annually in direct revenue to the city of Sacramento. We strongly urge that you approve the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement and term sheet before you tonight so that we can get to work on the important development and job creation tied to Aggie Square. For those of you that have joined us on a metro chamber study mission, you know of the other cities and regions that have created these hubs of creative collision and intersection of research, education, development, innovation, and entrepreneurship. What is remarkable about Aggie Square and the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement before you today is we are also creating a sustainable system and investment for housing and community empowerment for all of our surrounding neighborhoods. UC Davis is the second-largest employer in our region, and for every two jobs that UC Davis creates, an additional job is created for other sectors. We know from our work on the Prosperity Partnership, Gallup Sacramento, and the Brookings Institute recommendations, our region desperately needs the high-wage jobs that Aggie Square will provide, jobs tied to the future of work, as well as the 5,000 construction jobs desperately needed as we suffer from the pandemic. Lastly, you are creating a model for future projects of inclusive economic development, a model with accountability, metrics, and reporting to ensure, as a city, our actions match our words and our investments create impact. Thank you all for your incredible vision, leadership, and hard work to make this project a reality. This city is capable of greatness. Our time is now. We look forward to making it happen with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of Greater Sacramento Urban League. I am in full support of the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement. I have always said that UC Davis Med Center is a jewel in the Oak Park and other surrounding neighborhoods, the city of Sacramento, and the entire region. As a longtime resident of Sacramento and as the leader of the Greater Sacramento Urban League, an organization that stands for equity and fights for access for African-Americans and underserved and under-resourced communities, we knew that it was going to be important to be involved in the Aggie Square process from the very beginning to make sure that people of color and those who live in those underserved communities don't get left behind. Our requests were clear. It had to be a benefit to the entire community, not just some. Secondly, it must include an opportunity for youth in K-12 system for exposure and education. And three, there must be a focus and intentionality for good-paying jobs and careers. Thank you, Chancellor May and UC Davis team, for delivering on your promise. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Shanir, and Councilmember Guera, for not only the proposed city investment, but making sure that community is first. And of course, I appreciate all the communities that have weighed in on this process. The Community Benefits Partnership and the commitment to local hiring, workforce development, housing, and community is definitely a game changer. With Aggie Square, the jewel of UCD Med Center, will now create a burst of sparks, opening up further possibilities. We look forward to working to ensure the delivery of all of these promises. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much to all the members of the public for calling in and weighing in. Very important. Madam Clerk, who is first up in the queue among the members of the city council, where we turn it over to them now?
I don't have any hands raised at this point.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Valenzuela, then, Vang.
Okay, councilmembers.
I have a.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
I'll have a little quicker than I thought it would, Mayor, so I didn't get a chance to jump in there.
Okay.
I want to thank you all and the members of the public for calling in and SACIWD. And, I mean, your leadership, the councilmembers' leadership, I mean, I know how much work you all put into this, and I do want to start by recognizing that, because balancing such a large project for this long is quite a bit of work. And you all know, because it's when I spoke to you before this meeting, that I was really looking for a few things in this project, one of which was labor, the other of which was the housing, and the other of which was the communities, the communities' concerns. And I had other things, but I'm going to try to boil down into those three, because I do have a few questions in each of those buckets. The first, when it comes to labor, I'm thrilled with the project labor agreement for the bulk of the project, but I do share the carpenters' concerns when it comes to the student housing. So I do want to ask the folks at Westford, I do understand, since this is a Davis-funded project, that you're already subject to prevailing wage, so the prequal language that was referenced really just adds on requirements for the contractor to provide benefits to participate in apprenticeship programs and to do local hires. So is that something that you're willing to add on to the student housing agreement?
Councilwoman, I, this is Doug Woodruff from Westford. We had a meeting yesterday with the carpenters and have agreed to continue to talk and explore ways that we can work together to meet their needs. The reality is, we've been required, under the requirements from the board of regions, to make the rents for these project, for this project affordable. That's a challenge in, into itself. The housing that's developed across the Sac, the city of Sacramento and really the region is all done on non-pervailing wage, non-union work. And our, our discussion yesterday was, with the carpenters, was we would, we will certainly commit to the prevailing wage, and if we can find ways to do more, including working with them to find folks who, contractors who pay for healthcare and do other things, we're open to do that. We've also said that we're going to be open book with them and show them just how narrow the economics are on this project as they stand, because I think it's fair and balanced to show that this is a project we are doing as an investment, which is below where we would normally expect to do so, and we are doing it because of three things. Number one, we believe a housing component, an affordable housing component, is critical for the project. Number two, obviously, if we can't meet the region's requests, then the rest of the project will not go forward. That's been made clear to us. And number three, we think there may be some innovative ways that we can start to look at these over the next four to six months as we get further into our planning, since literally the housing project wouldn't start for over a year from now. So we're willing to continue to look at opportunities. We've heard from them as of yesterday, so that's kind of where we are. We've heard from them as of yesterday, so that's kind of where we are.
Yes, and we all heard from them again tonight when they called in, right? And so there's still ongoing concerns there, and I'm going to put a pin in this and revisit this at the end of my comments here. I know that we need to put money in sometimes to big projects to make them pencil. There is quite a bit of city commitment in here, which I know I've told the mayor and others I am worried about figuring out, but I understand we need to figure out. But when it comes to displacement risk, that's happening now, and I recognize that that started before this project, but it is already occurring, and we in fact heard that from one of the SAWD participants, who says that, you know, she's already received a notice that her landlord's selling the house, and we're seeing offers and bids. Vacant lots have already tripled in price in this project area. It's happening right now. And so I would like to better understand from staff, and this would be probably a Leslie slash Danielle question, talk to me about the timing of this $50 million. How much money is the minimum of what we can expect will be available for housing in year one? And then what is the timeframe by which that money will become available in the preceding years?
So, Councilmember, I will address that. This is Leslie Fritchie's voice. If you don't see my face, this is my voice. And of the $50 million, there are the three component parts. So the EIFD portion that is generated by the property itself, that likely will not be available for a few years, because it depends on the tax revenue generated by the project itself. The second component part, which is the city and SHRA investments, that could happen as quickly as the council elects to make those allocations, as well as SHRA elects to make those allocations for projects. So that could happen at any time moving forward. And then the third part, there is the $5 million. We would be doing some fundraising for the philanthropic portion of that, but UC Davis has committed to the $2.5 million over five years. We will be working with them to try and get as much available of that resource in the early years, if not this year, as possible. So that's kind of the breakdown. The first EIFD portion will be longer. The second portion is at the discretion of the council in making those decisions, and the third will be some immediate, hopefully within this year, as well as the fundraising component. So hopefully that answers your questions, but available for other questions that you might have my way.
Thank you, Leslie. I appreciate you and the work you've done on this. So what we're, I think, to summarize the question, and that reflects what I've heard from staff previously, EIFD money won't kick in for years, so the project has to be done until the EIFD money kicks in. And when we talk about the rest of the 29 million that the city has committed, and the $2.5 million that we're going to fundraise for, we're not sure when that's going to come through, right? Because we haven't actually identified where that money's going to come from yet. And so that really just leaves the $2.5 million, and that might be a better question for Davis. What is the timeline by which we can expect that money to come in to help us prevent displacement of residents?
So, Bob, are you on the call still? I hope they can answer that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you for that question. Yeah, that's set up as a matching program for philanthropic funds, so as soon as, I know the chancellor and mayor have already begun the process of reaching out to benefactors in Sacramento area to begin donating to that fund, and the university portion of that is set up as a match for funds as they come in.
Okay, so the funding won't come in until fundraising comes in, and we don't know when fundraising will come in, because that hasn't been secured.
I can answer part of that. The chancellor and I are committed to raising the $2.5 million within, I would say, the next four to six months. I think we can, or at least get started on raising a significant portion of it. And of course, the city's $20 million can be allocated as soon as there are live projects ready to go. And of course, that'll be a council decision based upon the recommendations and advice of our team and our staff. So not all the money is, in fact, I'd say, and then on the EIFD, Leslie, can you explain a little bit more? I'll turn it back over to you in a moment, because we're valence, it's just a follow-up to your question. The EIFD resources, could we access any of that money earlier than not?
At this point, the EIFD structure is depending upon those tax revenues generated by the project itself.
Yeah.
So we are looking at some other mechanisms that might provide some funding earlier through a CFD, but at this moment, the EIFD would be, those funds would flow after the project started generating that tax revenue.
I appreciate that, Leslie and Mayor, and this is more, and this is to make a point, right? Which is like, you know, funding for affordable housing is critical, and I think we all on the council agree to that, but this funding isn't going to be available tomorrow if this project is approved, with the speculation and the work that's starting to happen from a real estate side in Oak Park, the vulnerability that residents are under is happening now, and it will accelerate exponentially when this project is approved, accelerate exponentially. And I think, you know, I have floated to the mayor and to staff this idea of like, well, why don't we create a special planning district? Why don't we start layering on policies to try to prevent speculative sales? You know, we could, there are things we could be looking towards in other cities and other jurisdictions, including Atlanta, which I believe is also struggling through their own gentrification concerns that the chancellor may be familiar with. It's like, how do we look towards a layering on policy to try to tamp down? We could put a freeze on tax auctions. We could put a freeze on code fine penalties, like, so that people aren't losing their homes before we have the resources available to help protect them from losing their homes. And this is something that I feel very strongly about, not just as someone who's spent a lot of the last 10 years organizing Oak Park as a neighborhood, but because we know what's happening. We know what's happening. The Housing Element item has a map of displacement and gentrification concerns. It's our next item on Item 30. Guess which neighborhood is highlighted as very high-risk, happening right now? It is Oak Park. We've known that this is happening, and so I'm anxious about moving forward without anything that we can do, because the local benefits only work if the local is still there, when the benefits come through, when this project is done in a few years, which I hope it's done, right? Like, this is a project I support, I understand this is important, and I want to see this happen. I also want to see those residents that we hope will benefit from this project there to benefit from the project when it's done. And so this is something that I am personally very, very concerned with, and it has nothing to do with whether or not I support the project and concept, and everything to do with, have we done everything we can as a city to ensure people are protected? And then my final set of questions, and then I will make my comment to close off here, is this SAWD deal, because I'm really excited to hear that there's a deal, but I don't know what the details of this deal entail. I don't know what the accountability, I mean, we've been talking about it in broad strokes, but I'm wondering if somebody could walk us through what that deal includes that has led to SAWD being willing to step away from their lawsuit?
Sure. Yes, I think, is Leslie Walker on the call from our city attorney's office?
Yes, I am, and let me just bring it up so that I can walk through it with some thought.
Done a great job, by the way. While you're bringing it up, I just, again, not an argument, but just with the housing, it's just important for me to reiterate that you're correct, Councilmember Valenzuela, that some of these resources are longer-term, but we do, if this is approved tonight, we do have $20 million immediately to spend in whatever way the council deems appropriate to mitigate displacement. So that $20 million is city general fund money, whether it comes out of the 31 or whether it comes out of the next tranche of American Relief Act dollars, or state dollars, or general fund during our budget. That is a fungible, flexible-timing-wise commitment if we approve this tonight.
Mayor, if I could add a comment as well?
Go ahead. I want to run through the, go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, I was just, I was just going to add another resource that's not included in the 50 million, and you just, you mentioned it. I think that we can also look to the recovery dollars and the rent stabilization and rent relief dollars that have been made available through the federal programs to try and target some of that resource, particularly in areas such as Oak Park. So we do have that resource made available currently to assist.
Right.
I totally appreciate that, Mayor, and Leslie, I really do. I also appreciate that we have a city full of people who need help, and so I want us to be really judicious about how much we promise to offset the cost from a funding proactive, we're just going to put public money into it perspective, when there are also policies and tangible things that we could do to try to protect residents immediately, because, again, that funding is future, and we need help now, and Oak Park needs help now. So Leslie Walker, I see you came off mute. Are you ready?
Let's get back to Leslie Walker. Yes, please, on the proposed settlement.
So in general, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. The Community Benefit Agreement, we will be providing it to council for you to review and approve. I'm not the Community Benefit Agreement.
Settlement.
Excuse me. The settlement, the settlement term sheet will be providing to council to review and approve. But in general, it gives SAWD some ability to participate in the implementation of the Community Benefit Agreement, and then allows SAWD to dismiss the lawsuit that is pending against the UC Regents in the case. It allows, it commits the city to considering neighborhood, helping local businesses and preserving neighborhood, neighborhood local businesses, and it allows the city, it requires the city to consider community benefit agreements for all large projects going forward, and we will be working with SAWD to determine what types of large projects those are going forward. And like I said, we'll be providing it to you.
Yeah. Well, yeah, one additional bit of clarity, the settlement agreement is not before us for a vote tonight, and of course, settling the case, as we described earlier, is not a precondition, obviously, to the council weighing in on the matters before us. We raised it tonight, because I think it's, as I said earlier, it is an important fact for the members and the public to know that we reached an agreement with the community group that expressed the most significant concerns, put the most work into negotiating on behalf of the community, and filed a lawsuit against the university, and now are withdrawing the lawsuit because of the Community Benefits Agreement and the settlement agreement. And that's relevant to our consideration here tonight, but we'll have a separate chance to vote on the settlement agreement within a week or two.
Mayor, if I could add something to that?
Go.
You know, we, this has been going on for a long time. As Gabby said, I think they've been working on this for about two and a half years. We've been certainly heavy into this for a number of months now. We've learned a lot along the way, and I think we've learned some things about how we would want to do these types of projects in the future. And I think if you look at the settlement agreement, what it does is it lays out a path forward for the city to work with this community coalition and the community organizations that are part of the coalition about how to, from the beginning, work with developments such as this, whether it's in the transportation side of it, and we're also, we're also looking at pieces of transportation along Stockton Boulevard, whether it is, you know, just the fact that we are going to require a community benefit agreement when there's a significant amount of city resources going into a project, some pieces on the housing front. I think along the way, these are the things that have been learned, and we have agreement with SAWD about the goals of what we want for our communities, us as elected officials, them representing their community-based organizations. And again, I think the most important thing, and there's a lot of unknowns as we go forward, but I think the most important thing is it really provides a pathway for us to work better and smarter with our communities when we do these types of projects.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
I appreciate that, hi, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I want to say that this, I wish, I mean, I'm not saying that I don't believe you, I'm just saying that, like, none of us, including the public, have seen this document, and it sounds wonderful. Like, I was just going to say, it sounds great. Like, I think, you know, I would love the chance to read it, I would love the chance to see it, to help inform our decision tonight, and I think this circles back to, sort of for me, my comment, which is that I want to wait two weeks. I want us to, I want the public to see this agreement, I want to see the agreement before I vote on this project. Like, I really want to take your all's word on this, and like I said, this isn't, you know, I am a lot of people on this call, and SAWD, and you all that I trust, but like, this is a huge commitment we're making as a city of funding and resources, and before I vote on that, I want to know what it says, and I want to be able to see it, and I want my constituents to see it, so that they feel as good as you all do about what we're doing here. And I want to see the prequal language for the housing, and the Wexford folks, I know that it's expensive to do, to pay workers well, I know, but you're already required to do prevailing wage, and like, I'm having trouble understanding, and maybe that's a side conversation about this open books, which I'm excited you're willing to do, because I offer that to lots of developers, like, hey, show me the books, help me understand where the costs are, and none of them have taken me up on that yet. But I would love to see the example of why requiring a contractor to make sure they're offering benefits, that they're participating with apprenticeship schools, and that, you know, they're doing these sort of, like, best practices in a lot of labor instances to ensure our workforce is taken care of, would be cost prohibitive when prevailing wage is already tied to the project. And so I have to say, and I'd like to have a chance to talk about some of these policies, because I get that the funding piece is great and critical, but like, without anything that's going to kick in sooner, you know, I keep putting out, and I'm going to keep seeing it until, and I'll say it again, in the Housing Element Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, right? Like, there's policies that say when a rental unit like Erica's goes on the market, that the landlord can set the price at what they want it to be, but they give the tenants and the community 45 days to meet that price, and if they do, it doesn't go to the market bid. They can keep the house, and they can keep it in community ownership and keep it as affordable rental housing, hopefully, or as owned housing, because now they were able to buy their unit. These are policies that we know we can do, that cities do right now, that I would like to try to consider before we move forward on something that we know will really unfortunately have add fuel to the fire of what's already happening in Oak Park.
Okay.
And that's not to say, anyhow, I'll stop. I feel like I'm just going to ramble now, so I'm going to stop my comments at that point and hear what my, the rest of my colleagues have to say, but that's how I'm feeling at this moment.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Vang, then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So I thank you, staff, just for that presentation. I just want to thank all the residents that called in today during public comment. I just, I have some comments and some questions regarding this. First, I want to just give my thanks to everyone who has been involved since 2018 for two years, two and a half years, so just a shout out to Councilmember Chenere, Councilmember Aragera, the mayor, Wexford, and UC Davis, and also all of our incredible city hall staff, and a shout out to all the Neighborhood Association and our partners with SAC Investment Without Displacement, just for their hard work and for pushing to get us here today with this CBA. It's really exciting, I think, for our community, but as we move forward, I think for me as councilwoman, it's also just really important that we don't leave a segment of our community behind. I do want to just say thank you to Wexford, UC Davis, and the city, and everyone that's been involved, just as I'm listening to the presentation, and staff was able to just brief me quickly, and I was, as I was listening, you know, I definitely hear there is a commitment to bring jobs, education, housing, and innovation into the region. And there are a few parts of the CBA, I did read through 92 pages, y'all, that was a lot. And I do want to say thank you to those who put all their heart and hustle to make this happen, and want to call out a few of the components of the CBA that I think is really great. One is really preparing local residents through workforce apprenticeship programs with our trades and also our community-based organization. I think that's really awesome. The $50 million for affordable housing, I think I echo Councilwoman Valenzuela on that. I think it's a good start, but we definitely need more on that. And the youth component, really, youth opportunities and educational support, you know, in the CBA, it was discussed about exposure to educational career and pathways, and onsite STEM opportunities for our K-12 students. Many of our students are still left behind, and I think this is a really great opportunity, so I'm super excited about that. Many of our students are still left behind, and I think this is a really great opportunity, so I'm super excited about that. You know, this CBA is really a pathway and a roadmap for us. But how we move forward to ensure we actually hold ourselves accountable to the CBA is really important for me. I think Councilwoman Valenzuela shared this earlier, but we know that displacement will happen if we don't have guardrails to protect our community. Displacement is occurring right now, even without the Aggie project, right, due to high cost of rent and housing. So having the CBA is really important. I think that's why S I W D, you know, was a critical partner in this to ensure that we prioritize our community's long-term success. So for me, having guardrails to protect our community is key. And I think a question that I think about, as I was listening to the presentation, I was, as I was listening to my colleagues and public comment, is what would success look like, right? What would success for the CBA look like? And a successful CBA means that we deliver on our promises in the CBA for all stakeholders that are involved in the beginning. And I think my concern, with all the excitement, though, is, you know, Mayor, you may not be here one day on the council. Some of the council members may not be here, some city staff, right, might not be here. So for me, it's about really the oversight piece to make sure that we execute the CBA. That's what my concern is. Again, this is a really incredible opportunity, but making sure we deliver on the promises is so important, so that we don't leave anyone behind. And so a question I have for staff, it's really about ensuring compliance with the CBA, right? I saw that on one of your slides, there would be standing meeting with S I W D, community meetings and work groups, and wanted to have an understanding of like, how often is this? You know, how are we going to ensure compliance? Because there's so many great components of the CBA, and I want to make sure that we're able to deliver on that. Like I said, not all of us are going to be here two years from now, maybe four years from now, 10 years from now. And I want to make sure that we truly set ourselves up for success. And so that's my first question is, you know, who is going to hold us accountable to the CBA?
So I want to, I'm gonna, can I, can we answer that question first? So I want to ask Jay and Eric to go through the public outreach and oversight portions of the CBA, but I want to add one other element of the settlement agreement, which again is additive to the CBA, which will require, allow, authorize, S I W D to host at least two community meetings a year with the city and the community, the purpose of which will be to actually review whether or not the project is meeting the benchmarks that are laid out in the CBA. So that's in addition to what's in the CBA. And why don't we ask Jay and Eric to go through that continuing oversight and evaluation process? And then, and then I want to add one other thing, but go ahead, you guys.
So Mayor, that's really, so that's really good to know, because I wasn't aware of that. I think that that is the other part where I know that there was a resolution that just happened before council meeting.
Right.
And I don't know what those details are, so I do appreciate if folks can go into that, because that accountability piece is key, making sure that we deliver on the CBA.
Okay. Go ahead.
The very beginning part of the CBA, we intentionally laid out the goals and the accountability measures, which require the four quarterly meetings. Now, these aren't the town halls. These are meetings, the proactive meetings, the checks and balances, so that we are moving judiciously every time on the goals that we're trying to achieve. There are, every six months, community town halls and report outs. That's in the CBA in itself. Now, one thing we found very helpful was that we broke down a lot of the issues in the working groups on the primary issues of housing, transportation, and jobs. So those will continue to happen, and the CBA is intended not only just for this project, but we very much intend to have this same format for other aspects of the campus as well. Now, the one-stop-job centerpiece, that one is a critical piece, because to your point, that's starting not at year four, when the first door opens on Aggie Square, but it's starting immediately in developing a pathway for our local workforce partners to begin recruitment. And all of those pieces will be discussed in those quarterly meetings. I think Leslie outlined in the staff report, or in the presentation on the panel, that we already said, you know what, we're going to set the dates now for the upcoming meetings so that everyone is continued to be engaged. That is part of good faith effort. Jay, I don't know if you want to, the settlement strengthened and did an overlay on that to make sure that whatever gaps or ambiguity was missing, we included in that. I don't know, Jay, if you want to go into that part.
Yeah, just on the settlement part, there's also a requirement that if things are not measuring up as they should by the metrics that we've got in the CBA, we're required to go to S I W D and to the community and say, this is what's going on, we need to fix this. I think, you know, Eric's laid out a lot of the reporting requirements. There's an annual youth engagement report. There will be an annual report that will cover all of the metrics in the CBA. I think the bigger question here is, how do we, how do we work with the community? Because we won't be successful trying to do this on our own. It's that simple to me. Difficult in implementation. But if we want to give you an example, this one-stop that we've talked about, that Fabrizio Sasso mentioned when he called in, that is a partnership with four, at least four, community organizations. The Urban League, Asian Resources, Lot Familia, and Pro Use and Families, plus SETA, plus the Central Labor Council, and plus the Building Trades. They will be the ones designing the one-stop, and they will be the ones implementing the one-stop. So it's not just all about what the city does, or frankly, what UC does or what Wexford does. It's what we do all collectively and how we report that out. We're going to be totally transparent, and as you heard Doug say on the housing piece, they're opening their books. I think we all need to do that, and if we're going to have a partnership with the community, we need to be transparent about what we're doing, how we do it, and how we report out. So I just feel like, you know, this is around accountability for everyone, and it starts and ends with the public agencies, but includes the community looking at themselves, and it includes UC and Wexford as well.
Let me add one other thing, Councilmember Vang, that we do not intend or desire for there ever to be a lawsuit between us and UC Davis or us and Wexford. But I think we should say, because it's in the CBA, that for example, if our partners do not live up to the requirement, and it is a mandate, as Councilmember Geta described earlier, not an aspiration, to ensure that 20% of the jobs are from the community, 25% after, after the first 10 years, that if our partners are not following through on that and not trying, not acting in good faith, that we can in fact go to court and we can seek what's called specific performance. That's in the community benefits agreement. Now, we're never going to get there, because there are all, for one, we're working as partners, and two, there is all of this public reporting required and outreach required and community meetings and stakeholder involvement required. But you should know that there is in fact a real remedy in the CBA. It's right there. If in fact, this is not a statement of principles, it's an actual legal agreement where we are bound to the community and our partners are bound to the city around mandatory local hiring, around the housing component, around transportation investments, and around the process that Eric and Jay just described in some detail. That's important, it's enforceable. It is enforceable, and that's important for you to know. Councilmember Vang, continue, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. I appreciate the insight. Just because there was a resolution within this last few hours, I think it's important for me and for the public to know what does that entail. The second piece is, I think I also heard from folks who called in and the carpenters today that currently there's no pre-qual language for the student housing construction, which is also a red flag for me. This is really important for me, because I think, I mean, I'm a strong believer, we have to make sure that we're paying folks fair wages, solid benefits, and most importantly, that construction project really reflects the diversity of our region. And I'm, you know, it's great to hear from Wexford that the carpenters and y'all have been in conversation. So that makes me really hopeful. But I'd like to just make a direction, because this is also something that's really important to me, wanting to make sure that, you know, that we explore our pre-qual language and local hire for the student housing. That's really important for me, and I think it's really important for our region as well. And so I want to make sure to reiterate that here. I think Councilmember Valenzuela share that concern as well as I do. And I think we heard loud and clear from workers that called in today regarding their concern and want to make sure that, you know, we are putting protections and guardrails in place to protect workers. So with that, those are my comments for now. And I think my last piece is just for me, you know, the CBA is our tool, right? It's really our tool to overcome lack of access to opportunities for underserved communities and historically underrepresented minorities and women, and women as well in the workforce, right? And so how we move forward is going to be really important. But I do want to thank staff for their incredible work. And again, Councilmembers Guerra and Councilperson Chenere and the mayor, just, you know, for all the heavy lifting that y'all have done to get us here today. So looking forward for more conversation before we take a vote on this.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, a lot of thanks have been said, and I'm just going to say ditto. An awful lot of people have worked on this extraordinary opportunity. You know, as we drill down in the details, I'd like not to forget the bigger picture here, which is we don't have opportunities where a billion dollars is going to be invested on our city. These opportunities don't grow on trees. This is extraordinary. And the possibilities for our city here are extraordinary. I really appreciate UC Davis and Wexford coming forward with this project. And all the work around the details and the community benefits agreement are fantastic. But I just wanted to reiterate that in the bigger picture, this is truly a once-in-a-generation opportunity. You know, this is bigger than Golden One Center. This is a really big deal for this city. And, you know, I'm not wanting to look a gift horse in the mouth. I'm very grateful for this kind of investment in Sacramento. It can be transformative. And, you know, the work that Jay and Eric and Mayor and our team, everybody has done is really important, and a lot of ground has been covered. There's a couple of issues I would like to address, just partly for public information. One is about the E I F D, so I want to ask Leslie Fritsch. As far as the infrastructure investment piece and, you know, repaying Wexford $30 million with tax increment, I think it's important that the public knows that Wexford is fronting the money for those infrastructure improvements at the get-go and paid with tax increment as the project progresses. Is that correct, Leslie?
That is absolutely right. Wexford is fronting the money for the public infrastructure as well as the vertical construction.
So, you know, as somebody who's worked on a lot of projects, infrastructure is usually the first roadblock to get something out of the ground. And for Wexford to be able to front the money to make this possible is not a small thing at all. And the E I F D is a great financing structure to be able to cause this to happen. You know, we worked with a similar situation for MLS, but the developer was not fronting the money, the city was going to have to front the money. So this is an extraordinary opportunity, quite frankly.
I had something really quickly, is that Wexford is also committed to front the money for the E I R, for the second E I F D down Stockton Boulevard, which is about $400,000 or so.
Yeah. Thank you, Jay. You know, all of these things add up to a very extraordinary opportunity for our city to grow. And coming up with the money to do that foundational work is extremely difficult on any project, especially the larger projects. And frankly, our infrastructure is very aged and needs a lot of work. So again, to get this out of the ground, it's not an easy thing to do. So big thanks to Wexford for being able to handle that piece of it. You know, I'd like to say that the PLA is of some concern to me. Look, our unions have tremendous apprenticeship programs, all of them do. They are great, and they afford great opportunities to people who choose to become a unionized worker. But the fact does remain that about, around 80% of the construction workers in Sacramento are not unionized, they're not organized labor. So I wanted to ask Doug Woodruff just a question about the thinking of Wexford in choosing to go with the PLA.
Councilmember, I think for the greatest part of the construction, about 85%, which is large-scale commercial buildings, we, our general contractor, Whiting Turner, who's been working in Sacramento for, you know, 20, 30 years, has long found that the trades have worked best for those large-scale projects. And we support that. We have consistently, in other markets, found that to be very much the same. And while I appreciate the comments that were made tonight, when we look at the contracting world in Sacramento, we see that most of the contractors of scale and subcontractors of scale in the areas that we're going to need are really already hiring union workers. So we felt like that was a commitment we can and should make. And we believe in paying people what they're, you know, what we can and what they're worth, and we believe in benefits. And since I have the floor, I can come back and reaffirm one thing, that as I looked at the prevailing wage requirements for the state of California, they would include benefits, which would be healthcare and other related benefits. So I just wanted to put a point on that, because it was, I wasn't as clear on that in my previous answer to Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Okay, thank you, Doug. You know, I appreciate that. The fact of the matter is that, you know, our local unions do perform and perform well, and they do afford great opportunities for people who get into the apprenticeship programs and lay out a future. As all of you know, I've worked in private construction for most of my life, and so I have that sort of mentality about me, but in a bigger project like this, and these are very substantial buildings, I understand your thinking, Doug. So thank you for making that clear. You know, overall, I think that the benefits of this project are tremendous to the city, and I understand the gentrification concern. It is real. But the fact of the matter is that our housing market is really out of balance right now. And in every area of the city, we're seeing astronomical gains in the prices of houses, of land, everything. You know, in my own neighborhood, prices are going up about 3% a month. It's ridiculous and unprecedented. You could say that there's gentrification almost anywhere in the city. Now, so that leaves us with the point of trying to understand how much this project is exacerbating the problem in Oak Park and the surrounding communities. I would like to see some data about that. I don't think we should just assume that this can all be ascribed to the idea that if we pass this project, Oak Park is going to go crazy. Prices all over the city have gone crazy, and it's largely due to market pressures that are beyond our control. In other words, a lot of tech people from the Bay Area coming here and snapping up real estate at unprecedented rates, and it's because of telawar. It's actually because of the pandemic. These things we cannot control, and we can't micromanage. We can have some effect on it with the community benefits agreement, but we can't solve that particular problem with this particular project, in my opinion. Although, you know, we should make efforts to work on the issue. But, you know, we live in a free market system, and real estate pricing is not something the city council necessarily controls. Anyway, all that being said, I think this is a tremendous opportunity. I'm glad that SRBX and North State BIA are behind this. I think that that's a very powerful endorsement. I think that that's a very powerful endorsement, and I look forward to moving ahead with this. I'd look forward to a real transformation of the Stockton Corridor and the Broadway Corridor. This is going to have ramifications for a large swath of our city, and like Jay, I'm very excited about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Mayor Tom Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments, too, and I'm, you know, trying to gather my thoughts around all of this and really have spent a lot of time on it as well. First of all, for, you know, folks who are keeping track, this project has probably been in the works for almost five years. And, you know, a lot of effort. I am, I too am a UC Davis Aggie proudly, and I love Chancellor May. I was so, so happy when he came here. And his vision for Aggie Square, you know, no matter where it landed, was magnificent from an alumni standpoint, and I'm so glad that he chose to have that asset land in Sacramento and attach it to the hospital and teaching school, which is such a great history, you know, that that hospital, UC Davis Hospital originally, of course, was a Sacramento County hospital. What you may not know is the city actually paid for it to be built for the county. But so this is really like just another partnership in the same location to do more good work and bring more things to our community. I do, however, have some questions around timing, and I have some really strong feelings around how this is being presented to us as a council. Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang are both fairly new. I am not. I have been here a long time, and I have brought many large projects forward myself. And I can't help but think how difficult some of those projects were for me when I had the full support of every neighborhood association. We received four letters from the four adjacent neighborhoods to this project asking us to delay today. And if I would have brought an agreement with a key community partner and just told you guys to trust me about what it said, I have a hard time believing you would have voted yes on that. And I, I got to tell you, it doesn't feel very good, just the way it's being presented and the way Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang's questions were answered. As a sort of the mom here and the long-term woman on this council, that did not feel good at all. This project is amazing and wonderful, but my gosh, it should be, you know, like Disneyland, universally loved. I just question, have we put the right, have we given everybody enough time to absorb it, to read it? We have a 10-day rule on contracts that are a certain size, but we're voting on things with implications to items that were just negotiated and also, you know, items that were just released on Thursday or actually later. I think we just got an email in our inbox from the city attorney with some language on the most recent proposal. I just, it feels very on the fly to me. And I would just say, not only is that a little bit uncomfortable, which I could probably live with, it's striking me as a little offensive. I guess I'll leave that for folks to just absorb however they may. I do want to say I am 1,000% supportive of the project labor agreement. Thank you to all the trades groups who worked so hard to make sure that would happen, who always work so hard. That's not just 5,000 jobs. It's 5,000 jobs where people are going to get paid a livable wage where they can actually, hopefully, afford to live in Sacramento and have that job and build that facility. And I think that is extremely important, and I, you know, I'm very proud that Chancellor May is leading this project and proud of him and his vision. I think those are amazing. I have one concern about the structure on the term sheet. I can probably get past this and support it anyway. I just want to mention it so that we can think about it. The idea that we have to create a CFD because the EIFD money won't come in fast enough, so we'll be doing a CFD, and that will be how we do the debt service bond payments, is good, but the fact that the backstop is a developer is a little bit hard for me because, you know, what if the developer is gone? I mean, these payments are talking about a 45-year lifespan on that money coming in. Very likely, the developer won't be involved any longer, so then what is the backstop? And if it is the city or the city's general fund or some other form of city, or UC Davis, for that matter, I just want to better understand that. So maybe that's something somebody can answer tonight, and if you can't, it's okay. It's something I think you could get back to me on later. It doesn't have to be completely solidified, but I do think it's a concern that we should at least discuss tonight, especially given the fact that, you know, when we did the Golden One Center, who would have ever thought we were going to have a pandemic a few years later? And it has impacted us, right, in a way that we never thought would. So when we're entering into these large deals that are bound to become even larger, I think it's really important that we double-check our work and we make sure that what we're obligating this city to for 45 years or whatever is something that is attainable and that it doesn't make things hard for us. I have a real problem with the ZIP code preferences. I do not mind the ZIP codes around the area to identify geographic locale and hiring people locally. That's fantastic. But when we say we're going to use ZIP codes to identify who's in need of employment, it's like drinking from a colander. Everything's falling out the bottom. I don't know, you know, it makes no sense to me. Let me give you a couple of examples of how this doesn't make sense to me. Almost everyone who's spoken tonight has talked about young people and jobs. Well, 95819 is not even one of the ZIP codes included. Let me tell you what's significant about that. Sac State and all of their student housing, including their housing on Folsom Boulevard, is all in 95819 and their campus. How about 95834? Half of Northgate is in 95834, as is Nuthomas High School, which has a pre-apprenticeship program to teach students to enter the trades, but they are not included. 95835, 11 low-income inclusionary apartment complexes. But because they live in a 95835 ZIP code, it wouldn't matter. We have, as a region, prioritized not creating areas with concentrated poverty. And I realize there are still areas with concentrated poverty, but there are also people living in poverty all across our city, living off of vouchers, living in low-income complexes. And there has to be a better way than using ZIP codes. And I'm not talking about for the local hire. For the local hires, ZIP codes is fine. I'm talking about for wanting to do equity hiring and break cycles of poverty and give people employment based on the fact that they're living in poverty. And so I would like to see us work towards a better model, something that actually looks at people's income as, you know, the predominant factor for whether or not they need that employment more than anybody else in the city. I just want to make sure that it's actually working because also, the reverse happens when you drop these big ZIP codes in. There's parts of Elk Grove in here, right? I mean, there are very wealthy parts in here. There are parts of East Sac, parts of, you know, that are very wealthy. And I just don't think that's achieving the stated goal that we were going after. I'm not sure why we wouldn't, even if we didn't, I understand not wanting to delay the project because I've never seen a construction project get cheaper over time, but I don't see how one week would hurt us to let the four adjacent neighborhood associations, Elmhurst, Oak Park, South Oak Park, and Tahoe Park, send us all letters, all of their, not just people who live there, their neighborhood association leadership means they voted and agreed to do it, to send us a letter asking for some more time. I don't know why we wouldn't just give them that week. It also gives us a week to read the document that was just agreed to, which sounds amazing, but we haven't seen yet. So I, you know, I just concerned about that. And on the CBA, this is probably my biggest concern of all. I love the community benefits agreement idea. I think the 16 million that comes out of the 20% of the EIFD is brilliant, the $5 million for fundraising, I'm not sure I understand how that's going to be fundraised, but since other people have committed to do it, I'm fine to agree to that piece as well, but it still leaves about a $30 million gap. And I heard the mayor say earlier today that that is not a commitment to use our housing trust fund, but I don't know where else we have $30 million. And if we're being asked tonight, Mayor, I know you're going to say no to this, and I want you to say no because I just want to hear it on the record, but if we are being asked tonight to choose between the housing that is proposed with this project and, say, women and children's shelters or homeless services or projects that help homeless families in Sacramento, then I'm not going to support this tonight. I cannot.
Well, that, let me answer your question, if I may, because that is not the choice. What I said earlier, and I mean it, is that if this city, and I believe we are, if we are truly committed to addressing the affordable housing and homeless crisis in our city, then we will see this 31 million, which I had, by the way, scratch and claw for, if you remember it mid-year, you will see this and we will see this as merely a down payment. Because what I want for our city is a $100 million-plus trust fund. Now, it may take a little while to build that up.
Mayor, can I just be really specific? If I can talk myself into a yes on this, which I am trying to do, can you assure me that the $31 million that we have right now, that there's still at least another vote ahead of us before that money gets spent on this project? And I would have a chance, and my colleagues would have chances, to put forward projects that we think maybe would have a higher priority. For me, that is homeless women and children and homeless families. Is that still an opportunity?
The answer to your question is absolutely yes. However, to be, let me finish because I want to give you a complete answer. The answer is yes, but we are committing ourselves, as a matter of resolution tonight, if we pass this, to over time spend $20 million of city money on the Stockton Boulevard corridor, the order of which we spend that money is still a choice for the city council. The first 31 can go to anything that the council by majority prioritizes in any other area. But we are committing over time, and frankly, the need is now, but over time, to spend at least $20 million of city money on affordable housing in the Stockton Boulevard corridor.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the $20 million overtime on the Stockton Boulevard. I would have a problem with is the order, right? So.
That's up to the city council. That's up to us. That's up to us.
I want to know that that decision is still ahead of us, that we could still, you know, we might choose one thing in Stockton Boulevard, we might choose one thing in District Two, we might choose one thing that's citywide for women and children, whatever, that decision is still ahead of us for the 31 million that we have sitting in the housing trust right now. That's all I want to know. I find $20 million overtime on Stockton Boulevard.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Stockton Boulevard is more than deserving of $20 million overtime, but so is Del Paso Boulevard, and I just want to make sure, and so is Northgate. And I just want to make sure that we still have time to make those decisions, too. And Stockton, some of the housing projects, this leads me to the sort of second half of this, is I've heard multiple times tonight that the housing is either workforce housing or student housing, which is, sounds great, except for that, as it has been explained to me, and maybe I just have this wrong, the first one and the most ready, shovel-ready one is certainly that. It is family housing, it is low-income, and that sounds great. I think it has a $10 million need. I think that's a pretty easy yes right off the bat. But I'm told the second project is senior affordable. I'm all for lifelong learners, but I'm having a hard time understanding how a senior affordable complex is either student housing or workforce housing. So I'm going to need somebody at some point later to explain that one to me, but it can be when we make the priority decisions on these deals. That's fine. But I really believe we should be putting families and especially homeless families first, but it does sound like one of these housing projects would help us do that on Stockton Boulevard, and I will be happy to support that when that time comes. So, you know, Mayor, I think, I also, you know, these votes are separate, which is sort of hard to figure out. You got this, I think you have still kept them separated, which means the first one is the project labor agreement and the community benefits agreement and all of that, and then we'll have a second vote on the EIFD and the structure of all that. I guess I would just like to try this one thing here. I personally think that we should delay both votes one week to give everyone on this council a chance to read everything and to honor the request, this is really important, to honor the request of four neighborhood associations, Oak Park, South Oak Park, Elmhurst, and Tahoe Park, that have asked for just a little more time to read these documents. One week. They asked for two. I'm suggesting one. I'd like to make that a, I don't know if a motion's already been made.
No, I would like to give the honor, because I think it's appropriate, to Councilmember Sheneer and Councilmember Getta, Vice Mayor Sheneer and Councilmember Guerra, to make the motions here.
I think that's fine. I'm happy to make a substitute, is what I'm intending to do, Mayor.
Well, you're welcome to make any kind of motion. I would just say to you.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm going to respond, and then I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Sheneer and Councilmember Getta.
Okay, so once they've made their motion, Mayor, I'd like to come back and make a substitute.
You're welcome to do so. I want to turn it over.
Thank you.
Let me turn it over to Vice Mayor and Councilmember Getta to make their two separate motions, because we've got two separate items. Why don't we take one at a time? You can speak, let's make one motion at a time. I do have one closing comment that I'm going to make after my two colleagues speak to the motion, and if Councilmember Ashby wants to make a substitute or anybody else wants to, of course, the floor will be available and open for that as well. Let's do the first motion. I'll ask Vice Mayor Sheneer to make the motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I do, I do want to note, and I said this before, and I know Councilmember Guerra has done the same thing, as has the mayor participated in many of them, we have had, you know, I don't know, 50 community meetings at least. We have had large community meetings that have been done on Zoom where we've had 80 to 120 people register. I think we actually had 150 people register for the last one. We've done one-on-ones, we've done small groups, we've done advisory committees, and we have done with these, with UC, with Westford, by ourselves. We've gone to the neighborhood organizations multiple times. So there really, I don't think, should be any surprises in the CBA. The second agreement, which we're not doing tonight, the settlement with S I W D, that will come back before us in a few weeks, a week or two. I don't know. We'll leave that up to the mayor and the city clerk for a vote as well. But as I said before, that is mostly looking forward and does not really impact, except in a few accountability pieces, but does not really impact the CBA. It's value-add to it. It doesn't affect the terms that we negotiated with Westford and with UC Davis. So I think that at this point, and I know we've talked to the developer quite a bit, I want us to move forward. So I'm going to move the first of these two items. That includes the community benefits partnership agreement and the preliminary term sheet for public financing assistance for Aggie Square.
Councilman Getta, do you want to second it? And I'll give you the honor of moving the next item, but you want to second 28?
I'll go ahead and second it, and I'll also say that I'm excited about actually getting to work, because what the CBA does and what the settlement agreement does is creates an ongoing roadmap and a path for us. And that's, what I want to do is get to work on how we get the One Stop Job Center moving immediately, and we start hiring immediately for the current jobs, how we start working with their school district on the after-school programs that Travis talked about. And I'm excited about all of those future opportunities that we want to get to right off the bat. And even moving forward, we already have agreed to all of the different meetings with our labor partners on every aspect of what we see here before us. So I'm excited about it, to second it and to get going to work, because I want to get to work because we want to get others to work.
Final comments from me, then I'll allow Councilmember Ashby to make a substitute motion, then we will vote, and then for the next item, we'll use the same process. Here are my comments. What Jeff Harris said really, really struck me, and I appreciated. What Jeff Harris said really, really struck me, and I appreciated your comments, Councilmember Harris, about looking a gift horse in the mouth. This city has the opportunity to receive billions of dollars' worth of investment. And if we are to say no, because it is not perfect, even though it is not just good, but great, then where are we as a city without the ability to create significant, major new job opportunities? Where are we with our, our vision and our commitment to attract new clean industries? Where are we for the young people from our neighborhoods who are asking, what is my career or what is my employment future? We use the term inclusive economic development a lot, and people ask, well, what is it? What, what are you talking about? This is what we mean. Aggie Square is what we mean. It's not the only opportunity, and it won't be the last, but it is the most significant economic, inclusive economic development opportunity that we have had for many years, if not decades. And this historic partnership between the community, and I put the community first, UC Davis, Wexford, and our city, will test our strong belief that modern cities can, in fact, attract new clean industries, create thousands of jobs for neighborhood residents, revitalize struggling commercial corridors. Where are, where is our struggling commercial corridor of Stockton Boulevard without this investment? And still maintain character and affordability for the surrounding neighborhoods and neighbors. I'm confident, given the incredible work that has gone on here and the push from the community, that we will meet this test. And it won't be the first, and it won't be the last time that Sacramento has shown the way. I hope we say yes tonight. Grateful to all of you, especially grateful, again, to my colleagues, Vice Mayor Chenier and Councilmember Geta, for outstanding community leadership. Really proud to serve with you and to serve with all of you. Is there a substitute motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. And I would like to just say to Councilmember Chenier, who noted all of the outreach and work, I think that's great, but it still doesn't erase the fact that those neighborhood associations sent in a letter asking for a little bit more time. You did a wonderful job with outreach. They're asking for a moment to take it in. And I come from the school of thought where we put neighborhoods first, and I don't see how one week hurts us for anything. You know, I had 30 seconds while one of you was talking to look at the item that the city attorney just sent us. Top line, one thing's still missing here, childcare. I'd love that answer before I voted tonight. Again, you know, we've made it a citywide priority, but it's not in here yet as far as I can see. I want to give kudos to the Buildings and Trades. The only part of this deal that appears to me to be 100% done and signed off is that PLA, which is really strong and good. And the thing I most want to vote for here, but one week, I'm talking to my colleagues here, one week for these neighborhoods. Will you give Elmhurst, Oak Park, South Oak Park, and Tahoe Park one week to read the document? It's a motion, Mayor, for a substitute for a one-week delay.
Okay, thank you. Is there, is there a second?
Yeah, I'd like to second that motion, Mayor, and just reiterate that I don't disagree with anything you've said. I just want to know what I'm voting on, and I believe it's monumental and it could be really great. But I'll second the councilmember's motion, but my pro temp's motion to delay a week.
Okay, let's take, let's take a vote on the subs, let's take a vote on the substitute motion. It's been moved and seconded to delay for a week. Please call the roll when I'm 28.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
No.
Councilmember Geta?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. The motion fails five to four. Now let's take a vote on the main motion, as moved by Vice Mayor Chenier and seconded by Councilmember Geta.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Regrettably, no.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, the motion passes seven to two. Councilmember Geta, do you want to move item 29, please?
Move item 29, Mr. Mayor?
I'll second.
All right, is there a substitute motion on item 29? If not, please call the roll on the item.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Yes.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. The measure passes again, seven to two. Thank you, we will be back with the settlement agreement as soon as, as soon as we can get it before the City Council. Thank you all for your good and hard work. Let us now move to back the calendar here. We've got item 25, which is the Bike Way Master Plan.
Second, please. Screen. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Greg Taylor, Supervising Architect of the Works Department. I'm here tonight to present to you Sacramento Valley Station Area Plan. And it is my privilege to present a brief summary that will be brief for you tonight and highlights of the Sacramento Valley Station Area Plan, which is an effort of over four years in the making that sets the course for Sacramento as a regional center for sustainable transportation and a leader in sustainable design technologies to combat climate change. In coordination with Caltrans Division, Mass Rail and Transit and agency operators, we have produced a phased plan that will place Sacramento as a regional rail and transit hub for Northern California. The hub that will connect Sacramento to the Northern California mega region and provide mobility options for low-income and disadvantaged communities throughout Northern California to connect to urban centers for their needs. The area plan is designed to connect pedestrians and transit users to infill, infill development areas within the central city. It provides for a full mix of uses that support transit use, including residential, hotel, and office uses. And it does it with an ambitious, sustainable framework that includes recycling of wastewater for non-potable reuse, net positive renewable energy, which means no fossil fuels. And I am pleased to announce that as of yesterday, this plan is recognized as a compliant Vision Plan under the International Living Futures Institute, the highest bar today in sustainable planning. And Sacramento is the first city in the world to achieve this certification. It creates healthy environments that will provide Sacramento new civic open spaces for all to enjoy and celebrate our past, present, and future. And it embodies the sustainable aspirations of the rail yard specific plan. Tonight, staff asked council to act on these, on these policy documents, to accept the S V S area plan, adopt the addendum to the Rail Yards Specific Plan Update, E I R, and the listed policy documents below. And a new policy in the rail yards plan that reflects the city's priority to affordable housing, I require in the S V S city-owned housing parcels to provide 25% of those units to be low to very low income. And finally, amend and establish uses than the, the city-zoned properties that are appropriate to regional, a regional transit facility. Lastly, this plan builds upon the great success of S V S under city leadership with our partner agencies. It is already one of the premier intercity rail centers in the country, with Sacramento leveraging over $120 million in state and federal funds to be. With your approval of the E I R addendum tonight, we are ready to move forward on the new bus center that will transform S V S into that regional hub with many new partners and expanding the current six operators to as many as 20 operators or more. Finally, in conclusion, the desired growth will take S V S to a level of operation that will require a more formal partnership with our participating agencies. U S Council in January provided direction to staff to request S T A funding for this effort. We ask for your continued support as these plans evolve. Thank you for your support, and I want to express my great appreciation for fantastic staff support on this and our amazing consultant team that brought this plan to fruition. And the members listed below here are available for your questions. Thank you.
Okay, we do have, I think, four members of the public, three members of the public. Let's hear for the members of the public and then turn it over to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, may I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kathleen Alve. I'm a resident of District 5, and I manage the SMUD Living Future Accelerator, which worked to leverage the knowledge built locally by the construction of California's first fully certified living building here in Sacramento, the California headquarters of architectural firm Arch Nexus. We partnered with the ILFI, the organization that sponsors the Living Building Challenge, to run workshops and provide technical assistance to other project developers interested in adopting these rigorous standards. The result was nearly a dozen new projects added to the Living Future Pipeline. As Greg mentioned, the city of Sacramento participated in the accelerator registering the Sacramento Valley Station project and subsequently became the first municipality to submit a vision plan for the Living Community Challenge, and I congratulate you on that accomplishment. The significance of this really cannot be overstated. Living Future projects envision a world that is socially just, culturally rich, and ecologically restorative, with buildings that are all-electric, generate more energy than they use, capture and treat all wastewater on-site, generate locally sourced materials, and create spaces that reconnect occupants with nature. These buildings are not just less bad than conventional buildings, they actually help restore local economies, communities, and the environment. The standard requires a full year of building performance before achieving certification, so the results are real and transparent. The equity provisions in the Living Community Challenge are particularly powerful, requiring human-scale design, universal access to nature, and community services, equitable investments, and just organizations. Anti-displacement is an essential part of that standard. They are rigorous and take time to address, but they address the key sustainability issues we face, environmental and social, and they can provide a pathway towards more productive collaboration between developers and communities. The city's leadership in undertaking the Living Community Challenge.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I will. I hope you encourage all the developers of projects at the Sacramento Valley Project to go for L B C certification, as well as the developer of Aggie Square.
Thank you for your comments.
In the development of that project.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Steve Combs, speaking to you tonight as Chair of the Sacramento Regional Rail Working Group. And we want to offer full support for the staff report on the Sacramento Valley Station Area Plan. Two decades ago, the council wisely decided to preserve and later purchase the historic depot and surrounding 28 acres to invest public resources in the cleanup and infrastructure for the entire rail yard site and to adopt a three-phase plan to modernize and expand the rail yards into a world-class transportation hub in mixed-use district. When I left the council six years ago, the city had completed construction of the Phase 1 track relocation in rail yards, roads, bridges, and utilities, and was on its way to completing the Phase 2 depot renovation. The Phase 3 plan before you tonight is the next key milestone for station development, including construction of the ultimate transit center required to accommodate future rail traffic, as well as the walkable public spaces in mixed-use neighborhoods that will seamlessly connect the rail yards to a growing downtown and region, steadily creating its own signature atmosphere. Twenty years ago, no one could foresee all the twists and turns in the economy, the environment, and the political and cultural landscape that have landed us where we are today. But thanks to the mayor and council's continued leadership and commitment to a sustainable and equitable city, and most important, thanks to the dedication and talent of key staff, especially the city's Sac Valley Station visionary, Greg Taylor, and others.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Every week you vote on important matters, but rarely do you have a chance to vote on a legacy project like this. So, thank you. Tonight, you have two of them.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Jim Allison. I'm the manager of planning for the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority. Mayor and City Council, I wanted to call in tonight to express our strong support for the partnership we've had with the city of Sacramento and the partnership working with Greg Taylor and his consultant team. Sacramento, as you know, is our busiest station on the Capitol Corridor by almost double any other station. The moves that Greg and others have been talking about here at the station are truly monumental for the Northern California mega region. We are very excited to realize and support this partnership as we pursue grant opportunities and work in partnership with the city. So I just wanted to express today our thanks for, really, this is a crowning jewel for Northern California, but it's in Sacramento. I am a Sacramento resident, I used to work down in Oakland. I may still again after COVID's done. But I'm very much looking forward to working with the city in partnership and doing all that I can do with the Capitol Corridor and our leadership to bring funding to this project and really make this a polished crown jewel for Sacramento and the Northern California mega region. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Mike Lukin, and I am the Executive Director of the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Thank you very much tonight for your consideration of this package of projects to support the Sacramento Valley Station and the Rail Yards Project. We urge your approval of the items recommended in the staff report. This project is not only vitally important to the city of Sacramento, but to the entire region. The Sacramento Valley Station is the centerpiece for the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, of which Placer County is a key member, trying to increase ridership and the amount of trains to Roseville with the Third Track Project in consideration. The Sacramento Valley Station and the development around it gives Placer residents a world-class place to connect to trains and commuter buses. It allows them to go to future soccer games, visit downtown Sacramento for cultural activities, and work on a, for regional employers. and work on a for regional employers like the state of California. Thank you, city of Sacramento, city council, and staff for making this project come to fruition and giving Placer and regional residents and businesses more to be proud of in the Sacramento region. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right, I I know that Councilmember Harris was up in the queue to speak. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, first, I'd like to thank Steve Coen, my predecessor, for calling in and offering his comments. As you all know, he's a real transit advocate. I was going to congratulate him on completing his comments within the two-minute timeframe. He didn't quite make it, but he came really close, which is a tremendous accomplishment for Steve. So, you know, he actually has his name on the tunnel at the Sacramento Valley Station, and I think is well-versed. First, I'd like to congratulate Greg Taylor, not only on his vision for the Sacramento Valley Station and the area plan that he's created and authored, but the Sustainability Award is is just tremendous. So Greg, you should feel quite proud of that achievement, and, you know, I certainly am. This area plan is is a tremendous document. What you have before you here is 982 pages, and if you haven't read the whole thing, I suggest you curl up in bed with a cup of tea or a beer or whatever floats your boat and read it, because it's pretty good reading. And it took a long time to create it, you know, and we honor our staff by actually reading their work. This is a true mobility hub, and I'm I'm in deep support of this. Like my predecessor, Steve, I serve on R T, S T A, I've been a member of the Capitol Corridor, J P A. This is truly hitting on all cylinders for everything we want to accomplish in our region. The sustainability aspect, the affordable housing aspect, the walkability, everything about this is really pretty doggone good. And so, Mayor, I would like to open and close the public hearing and move all of the staff recommendations. And once again, Greg, thank you so much for an excellent, excellent piece of work.
Second. I agree, this is a really big deal, and thank you, Greg and Steve and everyone, for getting us to this point. Is there any other member of the council that wants to speak? If not, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember La Loi?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
150% yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
That is great, unanimous. Thank you. We do have one more item tonight, and that is, and that is Item 30, the submittal of the city's eight-year housing strategy to H C D, our Housing Element. Who's presenting on this important item?
That would be me, Mayor. Greta Seuss, I'm an assistant planner in long-range planning.
Welcome to you, Ms. Seuss.
Thank you very much. Can everyone see my screen?
We're seeing presenter mode, Greta, just so you know.
Oh, that's good. Thank you for letting me know. That's not what I want.
I just had that happen on my D four homelessness community meeting, so solidarity.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay, is that better now?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Greta Seuss. I'm an assistant planner in long-range planning, and I'm here to present present to you our draft 2021 to 2029 Housing Element. Tonight, we're looking for city council approval to adopt a resolution to authorize staff to submit the draft to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for their review and comment. The Housing Element is our city's eight-year housing strategy. It's an element of the general plan, but unlike the general plan, which has a 20-year timeframe, the Housing Element has an eight-year planning period. And there are a lot of requirements in state law for what needs to be addressed in the Housing Element, so before the city can adopt it, it must be reviewed and certified by the state for compliance with state law. The two main components of the Housing Element are the inventory of sites to accommodate our regional housing need, and the goals, policies, and programs that provide direction for implementing our housing goals. While there are many requirements in state law for what must be included in the Housing Element, the draft plan has been developed to be streamlined and user-friendly, with several main chapters summarizing our strategy and all the more technical data and analysis in nine separate appendices. As I mentioned briefly, one of the key components of the Housing Element is planning for the city's regional housing needs allocation, or R E N A. The R E N A is a state-required process that seeks to ensure cities and counties are planning for enough housing to accommodate all economic segments of the community. It's broken down by income level, from very low-income housing to above-moderate-income housing, and in the previous R E N A planning period, the city had an allocation of just over 24,000 units, while our housing target this time is 89% higher at above 45,000. In order to meet these housing needs, the city must ensure that there's sufficient land zoned for a variety of housing types that meet the needs of people at various income levels. So how does the state determine the affordability level of vacant and underutilized sites? It is based on the density allowed on the site. Land zoned for single-family homes is assumed to meet the above-moderate-income need, and land zoned for at least 30 units per acre is assumed to meet the lower-income need. Based on our findings of the land inventory, the city has more than sufficient capacity to meet the overall R E N A housing target of 45,580 units. Although we have sufficient land to accommodate our housing need, the real challenge is to build enough housing to meet our need. This slide showcases our most recent housing production data based on our annual progress report results, which will be submitted to council on April 20th. 2020 has been an encouraging year for housing production in our city, with over 3,600 units produced, 30% of which were identified as lower-income units, and 23% were deed-restricted lower income. While this year has been a promising year for housing production, the city is still in a housing crisis, and to meet the state-assigned number of units we must produce over the next eight years, we must produce about 5,700 units annually. And with such a great housing need, this Housing Element includes the goals, policies, and implementation programs that will help us achieve those goals. The Housing Element includes eight goals that create a framework for how the city will address the city's housing needs. Within each goal section, the policies and implementation programs provide direction for how we will achieve that goal. The policies and programs were developed with extensive community input and reflect the city's ambition to create equitable and inclusive neighborhoods, and to construct a variety of housing types at all levels of affordability. Before diving into the key themes of our goals, policies, and programs, staff would like to provide clarity on the differences between the Housing Element update and the general plan update. The Housing Element is anticipated to be adopted in July of 2021, which is prior to the adoption of the General Plan Update and Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The Housing Element update is based on the current zoning and 2035 general plan land use designations, and does not include modifications to existing land use regulations or zoning code changes. As a reminder, staff brought the General Plan Update key strategies to council on January 19th. One of these key strategies that council unanimously voted to support was to permit a greater array of housing types, such as duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in existing residential neighborhoods. It should be noted that while this key strategy is discussed in the Housing Element and includes supportive policy to expand housing types throughout the city, the key strategy will be implemented through the adoption of the 2040 General Plan Update in December and subsequent update to the city's planning and development code. I'll now review the key policies and programs that address each of the eight Housing Element goals. These are reflective of the input received through the citywide workshop on the draft Housing Element and any other input received. There are 48 implementation programs in the draft Housing Element, which the city is committed to implementing over the next eight years and reporting on annually to the state and city council. Goal one is to facilitate the construction of 45,500 new housing units by 2029, and this is directly related to our regional housing needs allocation. Meeting our housing target will be challenging, however, the city can continue to make it easier and cheaper to build housing by streamlining the approval processes, and the city will also support efforts to expand the construction workforce. Goal two is to support the production of over 16,000 new lower-income housing units by 2029, and increase other affordable housing opportunities within the existing housing stock. There are several barriers to developing affordable housing in California. It often requires multiple sources of financing and public subsidies, so to support the production of over 16,000 new lower-income units, the city will seek to develop new sources of funding, maximize the use of public properties, and review the Mixed Income Housing Ordinance, which contains the city's current requirements for market-rate housing developments, to contribute to building affordable housing. Goal three is to facilitate the construction of at least 700 accessory dwelling units by 2029. As part of the Housing Element, the city is looking at developing a financial assistance program for affordable ADUs and a toolkit with resources and educational materials to support and promote the development of ADUs in neighborhoods throughout the city. Goal four is to advance equity and inclusion and create more equitable and inclusive neighborhoods. This is something that we've woven throughout the Housing Element and the developed policies and programs. The Housing Element requires jurisdictions to comply with 8686 to affirmatively further fair housing. This means taking actions to overcome patterns of segregation, address disparities in housing needs and access to opportunity, and foster inclusive communities. The draft Housing Element includes several policies and implementation programs to have more equitable land use patterns and create more opportunities for affordable housing dispersed equitably throughout the city, expanding allowed housing types throughout the city, conducting neighborhood-specific action planning, and to invest in historically underserved communities. Goal five is to protect residents at risk of displacement from their homes and communities. The city is currently implementing some anti-displacement strategies, including tenant protections, affordable housing preservation, and conducting neighborhood-level planning. The Housing Element also includes policies and programs, such as looking at ways to expand tenant protections, services to keep homeowners in their homes, developing neighborhood-specific anti-displacement strategies, and supporting collective ownership models. Goal six is to preserve the existing housing stock. The city has an Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance that will continue to be implemented. The Housing Element also looks at ways to improve the rental housing inspection program and other programs to ensure that there's no net loss of housing stock. Goal seven is to is to prevent the occurrences of homelessness and address the housing needs of people experiencing homelessness. The Housing Element includes a variety of policies to guide the city in addressing the homelessness crisis. However, the Housing Element is not intended to serve as a comprehensive homeless plan. The Housing Element calls for the city to develop a local homeless action plan, and calls for developing meaningful metrics to understand the impact of different programs on helping to address the homelessness crisis. Goal eight is to provoke great promote greater universal access in housing and support efforts that provide older adults and people with disabilities the option to stay in their homes and neighborhoods. The Housing Element contains policies to help older adults and people with disabilities stay in their homes, while also promoting universal design in housing in the city. These include the continued implementation of the Reasonable Accommodation Ordinance, reviewing and updating the Universal Design Ordinance, and financial assistance for affordable housing and permanent supportive housing projects that exceed the minimum accessibility provisions of state and federal law. City staff has conducted extensive outreach to inform the development of the draft Housing Element. The draft Housing Element and staff-proposed revisions to the draft reflect this engagement throughout the update process. After receiving input from the citywide self-guided virtual workshop, comment letters received during the comment period, and feedback from various commissions and advisory group meetings, staff has organized recommended changes to the draft in attachment for Exhibit A found as supplemental materials in the staff report. And upon approval from the city council, staff staff will submit the draft Housing Element with the recommended changes provided in the staff report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. H C D then has 60 days to conduct their review, and staff will come back to Planning and Design Commission in June and City Council for adoption in July. This concludes my presentation. As a reminder, we're looking for city council approval to submit the draft Housing Element to H C D for their review, and I'm joined by our Housing Element project team to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Seuss. I mean, this is really an important subject matter, obviously. I mean, think about the last item we just dealt with with Aggie Square. It's really an important item, and I don't know that we do justice to it at nine o'clock after a long, long debate. So I want to make sure that, I know this is a formal process of submittal, but that maybe we workshop on the elements of this, you know, at a time, maybe an afternoon workshop, where we can really break this down, because I know this is going to deserve more attention than, maybe we will, you know, give it, given the late hour. But I do know we have 11 members of the public who are signed up to speak. Let's hear from them.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Am I to speak now?
Yes, please.
They're still talking. All right, okay. Can you start the clock over, because it wasn't clear to me?
You're on.
Okay, this is Maggie Coulter from District Six, and I appreciate some of the staff's changes, trying to decouple the effort to to end single-family zoning from the Housing Element. And as the council is aware, existing R1 zoning already provides for the so-called missing middle by allowing for corner duplexes and up to two ADUs under state law. The Housing Element clearly showed no need to densify existing predominantly single-family neighborhoods in order for Sacramento to meet its state-assigned housing numbers. Unfortunately, the element still includes the single-family is the root of all housing problems. It erroneously claims that some neighborhoods are predominantly white because the desirable neighborhoods are zoned exclusively for single-family, and that single-family prevents lower income from moving to these neighborhoods. Yes, there is economic exclusion in housing and many other areas of life, but it is based on money, not on race. It's blatantly untrue for the city to claim that single-family zoning is the cause of racial segregation. All of Sacramento's single-family neighborhoods are racially diverse, some more than others. It's meaningless for the city to say that lower-income households will be able to move into more, quote, desirable neighborhoods because single-family zoning is eliminated. Upzoning will result in market-rate rental units that will not be affordable to lower-income households. Upzoning will also fuel the gentrification and displacement in neighborhoods like Oak Park that are already feeling this pressure, as mentioned earlier. To suggest that some neighbor only some neighborhoods are desirable is actually quite offensive and evasive, because if the city truly cares about equity, it would ensure that all of Sacramento's neighborhoods are desirable places to live. Instead of attacking existing single-family neighborhoods, the city should be preserving existing housing stock, improving all neighborhoods, helping lower-income households become homeowners, and restating the reinstating the requirement that new multi-family projects include affordable housing. The city-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, the city's general plan and changes are so impactful that Sacramento should be able to vote on them.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Jean Schaefer. I'm from District Four. I'm a longtime resident of Sacramento and recently became aware of the proposed elimination of single-family zoning in the city of Sacramento. The goals of improving housing affordability and addressing historic inequities are very important. However, my concern is in the planning and the details in this proposed housing element. This will be a huge change for Sacramento neighborhoods, and it's not a proven strategy to address either goal. Where is the evidence this would work? Has the city looked at other communities that have tried this and seen whether it works? Is there any evidence that this will lower rents or housing costs, as prices are largely being driven by Bay Area, an influx of Bay Area people looking for cheaper, more livable communities? The plan does not address impacts on our aging infrastructure, which has historically been under- been underfunded in Sacramento. In particular, I'm concerned about the impact of greater density on our air quality. The plan on this service appears to be a bonanza for developers and outside investors. Investors could force many of our residents in low- and moderate-income neighborhoods out of their homes by buying up properties and converting them to market-rate, small, multifamily units. This gentrification hurts people that this plan is supposed to help. I also noticed there are no requirements for any portion of new four- or six-plexes that could be built in established neighborhoods to have an affordable set aside for a certain number of units. Sacramento is already meeting the state mandates for new housing.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Please remove the language from the proposed housing element that suggests eliminating single-family zoning in our neighborhoods.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, this is Linda Gonzalez, and I'm here to oppose the housing element and request that you not make any changes to single-family housing. I've lived in Elmhurst since 1965. I came here with my family as a child from Mexico, and I've seen the area undergo a lot of changes with the freeway construction and also with the UC Davis expansion. I have felt that there has been a lot of dialogue between the elected officials and the residents, which I believe is completely lacking in this situation here with the housing element. I am alarmed, and you should be concerned, at how many people I am coming across that are barely learning for the first time of the proposed drastic changes you want to make with single-family housing, and this should be concerning to you. I recognize that COVID may have been a factor last year, especially with all of us dealing with the crisis, but that actually should be one of the reasons why you shouldn't be moving forward with such drastic changes. There is clearly not a dialogue that you should have guaranteed to us as your constituents. The other thing is that there doesn't seem to be, and I'm not persuaded by the grounds that you are relying on to make the proposed changes, and it lacks merit, because there's no data to support it, nothing. In fact, I confirm last week that Sacramento will be the only city in all of California that will try to make this kind of a change to single-family housing. You are actually, by making this change, making Sacramento vulnerable to serve only as an experiment. That can go very badly. The other thing is that it opens it up to out-of-jurisdiction investors to come in and do what they want with our single-family lots. There are no guardrails, none here, that protect us as residents and the quality of our life. The other thing, and lastly, is that there doesn't seem to be any real legal reason why you are going to such an extreme to make these changes. I believe that you are moving too fast, especially given the COVID.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I respectfully request that you step back and listen to your constituents.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Richard Harrison, District Three resident. It is unreasonable for the city of Sacramento to mete out punishment to current residents of so-called desirable neighborhoods for fifty-year-old wrongdoing in mortgage, banking, and real estate practices. Rezoning to increase density through vague government feel-good social engineering of upzoning will not undo the past, will not provide affordable housing, nor will it address income disparity in our current economic time. The proposed increase in density of a four-plex plus two ADU on a single-family residential parcel will actually create more problems than it will solve. Those problems will likely be seen in our city's underserved neighborhoods first. For example, building in Oak Park. It is less expensive for a developer to buy a home in Oak Park than in Land Park. Knock down that old bungalow and put up a shiny new four-plex, and maybe with an ADU or two. Oh, and there won't be need for a off-street parking for that electric car. It isn't required. The new residents of Oak Park can try and take light rail that doesn't run through their neighborhood to work or shopping. Like it or not, Sacramento is still a car-centric town. Residents need cars. Oak Park's streets are as narrow as many streets in other neighborhoods, and parking will be difficult. Those new, small homes will cost market rates as either home purchases or rentals. New homes cannot be built as affordable without some kind of financial assistance from government or generous private donors. Those homes won't have any yard space for children to play in, trees to grow in, this city of trees, or a vegetable garden in this forked town. In reality, the city of Sacramento is inviting and encouraging gentrification through investor-owned property instead of individual wealth building through ownership, actually displacing lower-income or fixed-income residents while claiming to be equitable and inclusive. The state of California already authorizes two ADU per parcel. Scrap this local proposal and make investments in the underserved neighborhoods instead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Will Kennedy. I'm the vice chair of the Sacramento Disabilities Advisory Commission. Our recent March third meeting, my fellow commissioners and I heard a presentation by city staff on the proposed 2021-2029 housing element being presented to you this evening. After much discussion, my fellow commissioners and I came up with a recommendation that one to ten percent of all new housing be required to be both affordable and earmarked for individuals with disabilities. Here in Sacramento, we have close to fifty-seven thousand residents over the age of five who have one or more disability, and that represents close to about eleven percent of our city's population. We respectfully request that any sort of new housing have at least a certain percentage, a certain percentage of new housing earmarked for disabled residents here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council. My name is Adrielle Quarrel, the Policy Director with the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and we have recently reviewed the 2021 draft housing element, and we are excited to see the alignment with many statutory requirements and the proposals of many programs that will benefit local residents. The city has created a model for the region, and S.H.A. is here to support the implementation. There are some key proposals we want to ensure the city provides, including having adequate outreach and support. We encourage the city of Sacramento to amplify efforts to engage stakeholders in the implementation of some important policies, such as the reevaluation of the Mixed Income Ordinance, the Electrification Ordinance, and the needed virtual net metering, and the implementation of SB 35, which is created to streamline the development of infohousing projects, but currently does not prioritize affordable housing developments, which is in most dire need of. As the city of Sacramento has a call to affirmatively further fair housing under AB 686, we need the city to make a significant financial investment into programs such as first-time homebuyer assistance programs, land trusts, and other collective ownership models, as were described in the draft housing element. We must ensure there is sufficient outreach to engage Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and AAPI communities that have been historically denied access to lending and other homeownership and wealth-building opportunities. The city of Sacramento should actively use the forthcoming adopted housing element and area-specific plans to address displacement risks as new development projects come to the city. In addition, we want to just continue to commend the city staff for their job on the draft housing element, and we are really leading the region with many innovative policies and programs in this draft housing element. The draft housing element is setting a precedent on both incorporating the voice of the community and setting a detailed plan for promoting affordable housing, and we look forward to partnering with you in the implementation of these programs.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Francesca Retano. I'm from District Six. I oppose the proposal to allow duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes by right on all lots zoned R1 in addition to the two ADUs already allowed. This proposed change is unnecessary and destructive to the fabric of historic, traditional neighborhoods, which should be preserved. The city committed to sign regional housing needs allocation without upzoning R1 single-family neighborhoods. Once these neighborhoods are upzoned, we cannot undensify, as state law does not allow it. There are also no limits on where these new housing units could be built, even in neighborhoods like mine, where there are plans to build thousands of housing units along commercial corridors of Broadway, Stockton Boulevard, and adjacent to the Light Rail Station at 59th Street. I oppose eliminating minimum off-street parking requirements for lots zoned R1, which will have a negative impact on our narrow neighborhood streets and will not allow for charging electric vehicles, which are the future. Financing infrastructure upgrades in the R1 zone is also not part of the plan and would be absolutely necessary. Upzoning is not a cure for redlining or equity issues, which were not a product of zoning in the first place, but were caused by racist mortgage lending practices by government entities and banks and racist CCNRs. We didn't zone ourselves in, and we can't zone ourselves out. Economics determines where people live and keeps families out of so-called desirable neighborhoods. All neighborhoods need to be desirable. There needs to be equitable distribution of green spaces, trees, parks, and amenities. Homeownership is a way for people of all income levels to build wealth, and for some, it is the only way. By allowing housing types that will more than likely become rentals, people's many income levels will lose the opportunity for homeownership. The proposal is also non-environmentally sustainable. Gentsor hardscape will cause loss of green spaces and trees now in neighborhoods back in front yards.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you for your consideration, and I thank the staff for all their work, and I hope we can continue to work together.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Holden. I am a resident of District Five, and I have been paying close attention to all things General Plan 2040. And in my listening to the community, I hear that people have a deep desire for more and different types of housing. I have been, looked at the elements, the housing element, and see many fine ideals in it that I think many of us can support, and I'm glad to see that there are good ideas and some fresh ideas coming about, because in listening to the communities, I think we've been building a lot of R1 housing for a long time, and it is time to switch up the game. However, that doesn't mean that the way we switch up the game is to eliminate all R1 housing. We've done a lot of it, but now it's here, and people have those expectations. Plus, I'm concerned that for all the fine ideals, we're looking at the practical case of the cart going before the horse. Allow me to back up to explain that. Earlier in this meeting, there was discussion about starting an Affordable Housing Fund, which is wonderful, yes, please, past due. Please let this fund be operating and generating sufficient amounts of money to support necessary low-cost and affordable housing before redesignating zoning of any kind to avoid further problems with displacement across all of Sacramento. So please eliminate all references from altering any R1 zoning from the housing element and the land use element until comprehensive, effective programs and policies for low-cost and affordable housing are operating. Also, I urge the council to implement the goals of this housing element in ways that focus residential redevelopment plans in the hands of city offices and local communities.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
It won't be Land Park or East SAC that will have many residents displaced under the current draft of the plan, but barely no neighborhoods like Mangin Park or City Farm.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, I'm Adrian Smith, a resident of District Four. I'm calling in support of the moving forward of the housing element proposal. If we as a city want to become more affordable, make our housing more equitable, and meet the city's arena goals for the next eight years, moving forward to the housing goals outlined in the housing element is a necessity, not a nice-to-have. By moving forward to this plan at a consistent pace while hearing from the community and integrating feedback, we can show the state that SAC is a leader in supporting both equity and economic growth, and in building a more flourishing environment for everyone. In particular, the move towards a floor-area-based standard is, contrary to notions expressed earlier tonight, a proven strategy that will do much for affordability and emissions prevention. Finally, I would like to join in requesting that we consider increasing the FAR caps near transit and in higher opportunity zones. This serves both affordability goals as well as the city's stated climate goals, and can definitely be done without unduly impacting the neighborhood character in current residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next caller, please.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment and review the draft 2021-2029 housing element. We support a lot of the ideas and strategies in the housing element that looks and seeks to reduce the process and time to approve projects, and also do everything that we can to increase the supply of housing. One policy that is of major concern to the BIA is Policy H 4.5, which is the affirmative marketing strategy for new developments. We all agree that fair housing and equity is important, but this policy seeks to regulate and police marketing materials for new developments. We believe the city regulating billboards, flyers, Facebook posts, and other marketing materials is extremely onerous and burdensome on the homebuilding industry. We will request that this revision be revised, and look forward to working with you and the city staff on amending this policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, mayor and council. Bishop Chris Baker, District Eight.
Please proceed, Mr. Baker.
Bishop Chris Baker, District Eight, and I support this. I've read it over and over. It has a lot of good points. There's no perfect plan, and we work together to narrow it out, and I want to applaud the mayor on this, because I know it's good for him.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I'm a District Three resident and co-chair of House Sacramento. We're a local group working to end our region's housing shortage and to build more infill and transit-oriented housing. Just want to say thanks for the opportunity to comment on the draft housing elements in the middle tonight. It's an excellent draft. The city should be proud, and I would say the state could use this document as a yardstick for other jurisdictions as they update their housing element update. The document has aggressive goals to make a good faith effort to accommodate the city's regional housing needs allocation numbers. I do want to suggest, one of the staff recommendations includes removing direct reference to prioritization of missing-middle housing, including duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and small apartments. They pointed out some controversy in the comments in the public workshop, but the comments were just as much in favor of this policy as against, and the staff does note that this change will be analyzed in the general plan update, but in our opinion, the city should double down on its commitment to building more badly-needed housing in neighborhoods that have historically not allowed any. We need to make sure to lean into this and other policies in the document in order to reverse historic racial and economic segregation and to fight rising rents. I also want to address commenters saying that we didn't zone ourselves into this problem, into this housing shortage, and I would recommend that they read a history book on housing policy in this country, perhaps starting with The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. And that concludes my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and look forward to supporting the city submitting its final element in summer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is the public testimony. I know we have two members, and I- I know we have two members, and I, again, I would plan to workshop this since we still have till the summer to submit our final plan. But let's hear from many members who want to speak tonight, starting with Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thanks again, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Greta and planning staff on the job that was exhaustive with a lot of community outreach, and I think that they've come up with a very good draft plan. And I would like to go ahead and move the resolution to submit the draft plan to California HCD. But since I have the floor, I want to dispel a myth that is floating around Sacramento, and I think it's very important that this is said at council. Nobody on council has suggested doing away with R1 zoning. When we adopted the strategies for the 2040 general plan, the suggestion was made to allow various missing middle housing types in R1 zoning. There's a big difference. There's a lot of checks and balances in terms of moving forward with that strategy. But the fact of the matter is that the adoption of the 2040 general plan update will likely not happen at the earliest December of 2020, but more likely March of 2022. And after that, we have to change our zoning code standards to allow whatever changes we come up with. In the interim, there will be tremendous community outreach to talk about this missing middle housing type possibility. I have some concerns about the key strategy that was adopted. The point I'm trying to make is that nothing is being decided tonight in the housing element, that there is plenty of time for community outreach to reach a very reasonable conclusion about where we want to go with creating the possibility for other housing types in R1 zoning. This is going to be a process. Your council members will reach out. There will be lots of talk and plenty of time for people to present the arguments they presented tonight, which are all viable, but were misplaced time-wise because they really don't apply to the housing element. So that being said, I'm very proud to move this substantial piece of work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Valenzuela, and then we'll take a motion.
Thank you, yeah. And I would like to start with some brief comments on parking before I get to all the housing pieces here. Because I know folks, I've gotten a lot of inquiries of folks who are concerned about the parking requirements, and I definitely want to say that those conversations are ongoing. We've been steadily decreasing. I think especially, I know from the experience in District Four, it hasn't been completely without a tick-up. So I think there's been a lot of lessons learned about like project-by-project connections of the mobility alternatives. And, you know, really, we think that Matt Ironman's kind of a genius parking manager, and we want him involved in all the planning projects as early as possible to help plan. But those conversations are ongoing, and I think we're very open to the idea of how we balance these policies as the Councilmember Harris just mentioned. When it comes to housing, I'm so thrilled to see inclusionary housing as a policy we're going to start exploring again as a city. For folks who don't know, we used to have inclusionary housing, and I'd actually love for staff to do some analysis on how many units we might have gotten in different income levels if we had kept it. Because I think it was gotten rid of for a lot of reasons at that time that warrant reconsideration. And I know a lot of folks are thinking like, oh, what if we had inclusionary housing? We wouldn't have built all of this housing because it would have slowed down all of these projects. But frankly, I've seen very little evidence of that from cities that have stronger requirements for developers or stronger housing protections. So I'm going to keep calling that a strong argument until someone gives me some evidence that that's not going to work or some alternative for how we could build enough housing to meet this need, especially for lower-income folks, without an endless supply of public housing because even $100 million simply isn't going to get us there. And I think we could get this done in 2022 before anything gets implemented, as Councilmember Harris just mentioned. When it comes to streamlining, something I've also mentioned to staff that I want to reiterate here is how do we better align any streamlining and incentives with affordability requirements? When we're giving away such a public good in the terms of making something go faster or saving costs, I want there to be a more tangible community benefit tied to that that isn't just building more housing. And I think that a good example is SB 35. That was a bill that we implemented here locally without some of the anti-displacement and affordability protections that were written into the law. And that's the sort of thing that I would love for us to reexamine to ensure we're fully maximizing all the tools we have to try to incentivize developers to build more units for folks who live here and who need affordability. I'm also really glad we're looking at policies on vacant lots, and I know that's a big priority in D2 and D8 and other parts of the city. I've also broached with staff the idea of looking at vacant housing units. And one example I will give you, if you're curious, you can look up some of the new developments in my district. One example is The Press. It's located on Q Street, right across from the SACB. And unless I'm reading their website wrong, it looks like they have 121 vacant units right now, and that the rents go as high as four grand a month. And what a vacancy tax would do is create an incentive for people to lower a price until someone will rent the unit because we know there's plenty of folks in the city who are looking for nice units to move into. And it would also generate revenue that we could use for vouchers to help close the gap for folks who maybe need more housing, supportive vouchers to attain market rate housing. So that's another policy I want to throw into the mix, and I know staff is, we've talked about in our briefing for this item. When it comes to protecting current residents, and sorry, I'm talking so fast. I just know it's late, so I'm trying to get it all in there before I second the motion because I'm excited to move this to the next step. We want to keep folks from losing housing faster than we can build new housing, and that's been a problem that I think we're going to continue to encounter. This RENA number keeps growing. It's one of those things, and it's not entirely our fault. You know, we're in a region that's growing and changing, and there's a lot of folks who are moving here because we're a great city. But I know we recently talked at Lawn Ledge about bringing back a review of the tenant protection program. I think we're closer to 60 days now. And one of the things we've talked about is maybe moving tenant protections to 30 days instead of a year, looking at LSAC protections, other things we could do to keep improving those protections as well as preserving the housing we have. So our estimate is that deed restrictions on over 1,000 units of affordable housing are set to expire in the future in our city. And so how are we working with SHRA and other folks to ensure that those units stay affordable and that they don't just cycle out into market rate so that we can keep making sure families can access those units and we don't lose that investment that we had in those properties to make them affordable in the first place? When it comes to homelessness, I'll say something that I guess is controversial, but it's like, you know, when folks exit homelessness, we need homes. It doesn't, you know, is simple, and it's also complex because a lot of times folks who are exiting homelessness need supportive housing, and more often than not, they need extremely low-income units. And in this analysis, we don't often break out extremely low-income from other income groups, and I think that's important for us to understand how much we need there because extremely low-income units require subsidy. They're going to require a lot of investment for us to get those online, and we need thousands of them to get people off the street into supportive housing and to just housing that they can afford to maintain. So I think better data on that and that strategy of like, what is the strategy for extremely low-income? Because that is super specific. And I know in the document, it talks about vouchers, and it talks about other strategies, but we're clearly falling behind. I think we've only built two in the last seven years, if I read an analysis earlier this year correctly. And so we really need to start tackling that specific subgroup of housing problem because I think that's going to require our really active engagement. And then finally, when it comes to R1 zoning, I will say what I've said in a lot of forums and a lot of community meetings and a lot of emails with folks about this, which is that allowing for a broader range of housing types isn't going to solve this housing crisis. No one thing is going to do that. And when I look at R1 changes, I am looking at it in context of all of the things I just mentioned, of having inclusionary or some developer requirements, of better aligning, streamlining, of protecting the housing that we have, and anti-displacement measures and all that stuff so that folks don't feel like they have to sell their homes to a developer because they don't have an option to stay. And I hear a lot of folks mention how this is only going to increase rentals or how the issue is more economic than it is racial. And so I just want to be like, super, super clear that racial covenants and redlinings may be gone, but the legacy of those practices is not. And that one reason why people of color today are still more likely to be renters and are still more likely to be lower-income is not due to lack of work ethic, and it's not due to lack of attachment to our communities or investment on our communities or interest in buying a home and settling down in our communities. It's a result of these systems, these racist systems. And I'm not saying that anybody who lives in an R1-zoned area is at fault. I'm not saying that we're going to force you to sell your home or we're going to take your investment from you or do anything of that. But we do need to look at this in a systems approach and that, you know, I've had people tell me straight up, all it's going to do is bring more renters into our neighborhood. Well, guess who renters are? Renters are lower-income people and more likely to be people of color. And it doesn't have to be that way if we think about all the policies we can put around this to ensure that we're promoting ownership and that we're making sure affordability and anti-displacement is key. So in context of everything else we're considering in the housing element and the general plan, this is one tool that I think we just should have in our tool belt to try to address the crisis. So with that, I hope I didn't talk too fast, and I'm happy to second Councilmember Harris's motion to move this forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Again, there's going to be much more opportunity to talk about all of these very important issues. Let's go to Councilmember Geta, then Ashby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, again, thank you for bringing the concept of a workshop and helping, making it an opportunity for the public to have another avenue. And I do want to thank the staff for going out and talking to the different community organizations and neighborhood associations about our plans and how we move forward. And I think that's the, I think the key word there is the plan. It's not a single one integer, single strategy. As Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned right now, it's no one single issue is going to address the macro problems that are staring us down the face here in our city. So, and every one of these tools, we, I think we need to have available to us to be able to address those challenges, including what is controversial, which is the question of zoning. But one thing I strongly agree with is that we don't have a large variety of different types of housing that allows for different levels of income, not just low income, but modern income, workforce income, middle, lower-middle-class, middle-class. You know, there are different, you know, price points that people have, and right now, our options are limited. So I think, you know, we can't just say we're going to build on Stockton Boulevard, and that's it. Like, we can't just say we're going to build on vacant lots, and that's it. And we can't say we're going to just do sprawl, and that's it. So it's all of these different options, including things like mortgage assistance that we talked about in the last item and other type of rental assistance programs that I think we're going to need to explore. So all that to say is that I also encourage all our, I know I've gotten a lot of emails from my constituents, and our staff is slowly trying to reach back to everyone, and we will do more localized and small-community opportunities to meet with staff on top of the Bigger All Council workshop. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for, my colleagues, for moving this site forward.
Thank you so much. Pro Tem Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, really like your workshop idea, Mayor. I definitely want to do that. It just, we can't do it justice, as you said. But I did want to ask staff a quick question. I'm not sure if Tom Pace or Greg is on here, but the mayor and I had asked you, Tom, to start sort of a working group with some of the interested parties. And in particular, Kevin Ferrer and Todd Schiavo were going to be meeting with you all. And I just wanted to ask how those meetings are going and if you're like broadening that. I've heard a couple now colleagues say, particularly, this is on the residential zoning changes that we're talking about, where we can add the fourplexes or duplexes or whatnot. I feel like this is where the majority of the calls were because people really want an opportunity to talk to staff, really want an opportunity to be a part of that dialogue. We have a lot of work to do between now and December. Obviously, we're not voting on that item tonight, but we're talking about it, and it's mentioned. And I just want to make sure that between now and December, we have a plan to have meetings out in the community, to have larger stakeholder meetings, to meet with folks who have concerns because we really can solve almost every problem that people brought forward, just with like the design guidelines. You know, Councilmember Valenzuela and I have talked about this before, but the idea of two families living next door to you is already okay. They just can rent one house together. This is basically just allowing them to do that under same, under the same design guidelines so that the home looks no different than any other home on the block, but they have their own individual units. But I just think there needs to be some more discussion around that so that people understand it. And we can still control things around parking and, you know, the vehicles, making sure there's opportunity for electric vehicles to be plugged in. And some of the things that I heard brought up tonight are all things I know, Tom, your team is working through. So this is really my only question on this item. I'm happy to support it, but I would really like to understand, and you can do this for me later, but maybe give me some idea right now, what is the plan to work with those stakeholders on a more ongoing basis between now and December so that they have input with us, but also so that we're able to give them some explanations around what design guidelines can do to help sort of put the bumpers up on this dialogue?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby. Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. Yes, we have had that conversation that you had requested, and you had connected me with those individuals. We did have a conversation, and we did discuss the items that you just brought up, and we're happy to have additional conversations if they would like. And then we do definitely anticipate having extensive community dialogue about this issue, not just leading up to the adoption of the general plan, but after the general plan's adoption as we work on the zoning regulations, which are the final step. So absolutely, we'll continue.
Okay, great. Tom, could you proactively reach out? Kevin was trying to get on the call, but our queue was closed before he could get in. And he and Todd are looking to hear back from you and your team about when the next sort of opportunity for them to engage with you would be.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My concern is, when you get to certain districts, like District, my District, you know, when I hear everybody talk, some districts don't have some of the issues, like my colleague, as Katie was talking, parking being an issue, where in some districts, you don't have that issue. We do have zoning and planning issues. So I don't think we can come up with a solution that it's one size fits all. And I really, I think we need to look into this a lot more. It should be considered by district by district. And so we minimize some of the mistakes that we've made that has caused certain districts, like District Two, where we have industrial and residential mixed, where we have just kind of eliminated some of that zoning and planning that comes to the table. So it's hard for me to go along with a plan like this when I feel like it's more concentrated on certain areas of our city and how it's damaging to certain other districts. And that's my concern. So unless I can get a little bit more information on how these decisions are going to come up, it's really hard for myself or my constituents to go along with something that would have certain adverse effect on one district or two districts versus the rest. So I just want to put that out there for the staff because that is a major concern when it comes to District Two. Thank you.
Again, this is really a preliminary vote to meet the state timelines. We are going to have more opportunity, both through workshop and through actual voting on the specific policies contained within the submittal. So of course, vote, people vote however they choose, of course. But I just wanted to put it in context here that this is really a preliminary, a preliminary vote and not a specific vote on the underlying policies. We'll have an opportunity to do that. We have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Nice dog, Jay.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Did Councilmember Jennings vote?
I do not see Councilmember Jennings online.
All right, well, the measure, the measure passes. Thank you very much. That is the formal agenda and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Shenier for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before you go, Mr. Mayor, can I, for the record, just clarify? We wanted to continue items 24 and 26 to 420. And if we don't mind, just to clean up the record, I'd appreciate a motion, a second and a roll call vote.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and move both those items to continue until the 20th of April.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Yes.
We're calling the roll, yeah.
Councilmember Laloe?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Laloe?
He said yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Is the vote still open?
Hey, Mindy, can I, Mayor, can we stop for a second? There was a blip in the Zoom and Rick was on the call. And on the last item, when she called his name, he couldn't hear. So what we really need to do is allow him to vote on the last one. That's why he's just chiming in, Mayor.
Let's reopen the roll on the housing element for Councilmember Jennings, please.
Thank you.
He was there.
Without objection.
Thank you. For item number 30, how do you vote? Councilmember Jennings?
I vote yes.
Thank you. And we are now on the continuation of item 24 and 26. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's go ahead, council comments, ideas.
Thank you. Vice, Vice Mayor Shenier, can I read board and commission appointments to the record to the Sacramento Youth Commission, Patrick Leo Sue, Metzley, Nevia Lemus, and to the Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, Victoria Vasquez?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go now to council comments and ideas. You guys can use the raised hand if you want.
Jay, I have a comment, but I can't tell if my hand is up or not. It's just messed up on the thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. First of all, I just, I want to say congratulations to my friend, Tashara Jones. I don't know if some of you that are on social media might see I'm obsessed with Tashara. She's my very good friend. She's also very good friends with Julia Burrows. Tonight, she won a historic election. She's the first black woman ever elected mayor of St. Louis, Missouri. She had to run twice to get it, but she won tonight and I am so, so happy for her and so is Julia. So Julia Burrows and I both wanted to just say congratulations to St. Louis. You got a great mayor. Tashara is the best. And then I have one item for staff, Vice Mayor Shenier, before I go. I would like to ask, C manager, are you there still, Howard?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So I think this item can come back, straight back to council because I'm not really asking for a modification. I would like to add back under conditional use permits, under CUPs currently, there are certain items where council can use their call-up provision when something happens at the planning commission. We used to be able to use the call-up provision for drive-throughs, like drive-through fast food. And right now, the current ordinance does not allow us to do, to do a council call-up. So once the planning commission makes a decision on a drive-through in your district, even if your community and your planning commissioner said no, they didn't want it, it is a final vote. And I would like to change that. I don't think it's fair or right. I have community up in arms about a fast food drive-through coming in that actually never had a chance to vote on and neither did any of you. And so I would like to put that council call-up procedure back in on that conditional use permit, please. And if you could bring it to council for a vote, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
And that would be a change in the ordinance, correct?
I think it would just be adding that language back in. So I think it could come back to council and be an up or down vote. It's really not, there's nothing complicated about it. But either way, I'd like to see it come back as soon as possible. I have a lot of development in my community. I know others do too. And I think it's really important that the council members have the ability to vote. As you know, Councilwoman Shenier, you had a very controversial fast food drive-through in your district with McDonald's that was a big deal and that you didn't want and we didn't do it. And so I would like that same opportunity for my council district.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a couple of announcements here. First, I'd like to thank Sacramento County Public Health and Women's Empowerment. We worked with them both to create a vaccine clinic at Women's Empowerment yesterday. That was very successful. And we vaccinated 50 women who have been homeless. And I think that's a great thing. A continuing shout out to CM Ashby and Karina Telemontes. We partnered with them at the Vaccine Clinic and at Thomas High School, which is continuing to go very well. And lastly, the Gardenland North Gate Neighborhood Association will be holding their monthly general meeting on Thursday, April 8th at 6:30 PM. For more information, go to their webpage at gnnadinfo.com. And lastly, the YPSI staff is looking at putting up a pretty substantial increase to the Quimby and Lou fees. And I know that some developers have asked for meetings about that. I'm just asking, it doesn't require council action, but I would like to request that YPSI staff, probably Rinn and Constantino, at least give a report back to the city council about where those discussions lead and what the increase in Quimby and Lou fees will be settled on.
Councilmember Harris, if I may, if I may, that issue, that issue has come up and we are going to be sending out an off-agenda memo updating the council on the status of this. As it stands right now, we're going to put off that change for six months and to take in some of the feedback that we've heard from the development community and the timing. And so we'll, we'll provide you an update here shortly, but the, the fees will be revisited in about six months.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Dara?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just wanted to say a quick thank you to Bridget Dean, Fay Kennedy, your office, Alejandro Cabrera in my office, our code folks, Solid Waste, and all the folks who helped out on the 5130 Stockton Boulevard property over there, were able to find housing for some of the folks who were experiencing homelessness out there and also clean up the property and, and then, and then move forward on one of the property owners who was not managing his property as well. So want to do a big thank you for everyone on a, on a very complicated project there and a very positive resolution. And lastly, I wanted to thank again, you, the Capital Cities of the Advantage for their support in, in a very successful warming center on Lemon Hill. We ended up with over 100 contacts and, and a lot of folks connected to services. So thank you, everyone, for their part on that effort. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, and then I have one item, Madam Clerk, if you want to put that up. So with the support of the council, you know, we created youth seats on three of our boards and commissions, on the Arts Commission, Police Commission, sorry, and, so Police, Arts and Parks. And we have flyers now because we're now recruiting for those positions. We're not displacing anyone on, on the current commissions. We're adding a spot on each one of them. So if you all know, young people who might be interested in this, we will, I'll ask Mindy to send this flyer to each of you to send out with your stuff. Let's go to matters not on the agenda. We have five members of the public who wish to speak.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Yes. I think what I would like to mention is as how this project basically got generated relative to the history of all the closure alleys and streets in District Five.
So I'm sorry, are, are you speaking about a specific project or a specific alley?
Yes. The specific question relative to the alley slash street is how the city council District Five has come up with the idea of basically clear as to remove the gates from the gated alleys.
So every, every case is specific. If we have your name and number, I can have someone on my staff give you a call and we could walk through that with you. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Mindy, do we have contact information?
I have the caller's phone number and will forward it to your staff, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so we, we will give you a call in the next couple of days, okay?
Okay, well, the next couple of days would be all right. And I don't know what timeframe is being thought about, but I would be not available starting April 10th, 2021.
Okay, we, we will give you a call in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Shenier and members of the council. This is Mike Barnbaum. Wanted to take the opportunity to promote an upcoming business opening in City Council District Eight. Sacramento runs on Dunkin'. Well, almost. On the Capital Valley Restaurant Group, under the leadership of Andrea and Chris Padilla, after talking to them on Sunday, March 28th, have told me the hope and the plan is to have a soft opening of Dunkin', Coffee &amp; More at 8351 Bruceville Road on Wednesday, April 14th, and the hope to have the grand opening on Saturday, May 1st. This location is at the intersection of Bruceville Road and West Stockton Boulevard, directly across the street from the Cassounas River College Light Rail and Transit Center. For people listening, this is the southern terminus of the Sacramento Regional Transit District's blue line as it is today. This is the first Dunkin', Coffee &amp; More opening in Sacramento City Limits. And this is an exciting time because of, of the fact of how close to the transit station it is. So I hope you mark those dates down and that Sacramento will be running on Dunkin' for this and many months and years to come. Thank you, and I hope you enjoy the new business location. Again, soft opening April 14th, grand opening May 1st, when it does happen. And thank you, Councilmember Vang, for the meeting you held with me.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely, and I was just doing that. Thank you, Councilmember Vang and Chief of Staff, for having a Zoom meeting with me about this new business.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Thanks, Mike.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kevin Hooks. I'm with a small company called BLK Solutions. To Councilmember Laloe, I find it concerning that our only correspondence with your office was a conversation with Veronica Smith on March 9th urging my team not to continue, as she stated, wasting any more money and urging that we do not pursue cannabis in this district as there are new policy changes that are coming up that we should go research. She continued that our council member would not support our project and that there are other projects in close proximity that are in the pipeline to get approved without knowing our situation and being with core. As I referenced in all of the emails that I've sent to you in your office after the meeting with no response, I strongly urge you to schedule a meeting with our team, BLK Solutions, as we hope to work with you in discussing the subject of racial equity that the city has committed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Do we get to answer, Vice Chair?
If you want, you can have a content conversation because it's not on the agenda. If you want to answer and schedule a meeting or something like that.
Sure, please feel free to give me a call. The answer that you got from my chief is, is accurate. We do see an oversaturation in our community and a massive land use issue. So, but please feel free to call me and I'll make sure I'll set up a time with you so we can go over this and answer any questions or concerns that you might have within a community that's overstaturated with cannabis hazards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, yes. My name is Lambert Davis, the founder and CEO of The Bay and Back Cheesecakes, based in Del Paso Heights. I wanted to, first of all, say that I was very inspired, I hope his staff is still listening, by Chancellor May, a black man from the deep south who definitely understands Jim Crow and white only and black only issues. I'm going to leave my number, 916-370-9211. I'd like to meet with him and his staff. We are a state and federally certified small business and Better Business Bureau endorsed with the manufacturer. Everything is in California. The next thing I want to mention is that was very inspirational to see that someone went to Georgia to get an understanding. That shows that people can work together if black people are allowed to participate. That's a great vision over there. The other thing I wanted to say is that, that I want to send a shout out to the millennials, a group of young women millennials contacted our family before last weekend's Easter Passover. And not only were they all from different districts, but they, they bought cheesecakes from us and then they reviewed them and they said whatever we could do to help. And I told them to contact all of their city reps in this city and tell them about what they think about To The Bay &amp; Back Cheesecakes. And then I want to end by saying, I, I've been listening to my city councilman in District Two. Welcome to the real world. When you came into this project, you should have been aware of District Two. Our family and our, our roots go back to 1946. There's nothing new under the sun in District Two. We just need the funding. I would like to see the same funding on corridors.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Laloe, get us out a newsletter so we can find out what's going on in District Two.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more callers.
No, I appreciate that. Councilmember Valenzuela, did you have another comment? Let me see.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor, I missed the initial round, but I just wanted to commend like this really great thing happening in Councilmember Harris's district. You know, we've started vaccinating unhoused folks in the city and Chief Loach has worked with different teams and the county's working with teams. And there's now a standing vaccination clinic every Tuesday that started today. And I just wanted to say how awesome I think that is. And it's at Lowe's, I think from 7:30 to 9:30 every Tuesday in our Delaney Center parking lot. And this is how we're going to get out of this pandemic. And I just wanted to recognize and make sure folks knew that that was happening in Councilmember Harris's district, which is really, really cool.
A good note to adjourn. So we're adjourned. Thank you.